A very good afternoon to each and every one of you, and thank you so much for coming again, and thank you to those who are joining us in the gallery there today. I would like to welcome all of you to the meeting of council and to remind you that this meeting is webcast. It is with great sadness that I advise that Emily Turner from Women's Lives Leeds and Dr Simon Lindley, former Leeds City organist, have recently passed away. Emily was involved in so many projects around the city, but also in the role she has held previous to that. I know that she worked with many of you, and she had an amazing impact on the work that has been done around the women's agenda in the city. Simon was master of music at Leeds Minster and also Leeds City organist for over forty years. He was presented with the Leeds Award in 2016 for his immense contribution to music in the city. So council, please join me in standing for a minute silence. You may be seated. Okay. February celebrants. Hand of brighten up, councillor Sonia Leighton. Give her a hand of applause. Happy birthday. Councillor Fiona Venner, happy birthday. Councillor Barry Anderson, happy birthday. Councillor Kate Haig, happy birthday. And we have a big golden jubilee, councillor Sarah Field, happy birthday. And you're also celebrating five years of being cancer-free. We rejoice with you. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, so straight to agenda item number one, minutes of the meeting held on the fifteenth of January twenty twenty five. Councillor Flint.
I move that the minutes be approved.
Councillor Stevenson.
Second, Lord Mayor.
I will now call for a vote to approve the minutes. Those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Agenda item number two, declarations of interest. Invite members to please kindly declare any interests. Okay, thank you very much. Communications, our chief is act.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. No communications to report today.
Thank you very much. Next, motion to suspend council procedural rules in respect of items four and six. Councillor Flint.
I move in terms of the notice, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stevenson. Okay, I will now call on the vote for the procedural motion. Those for? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Agenda item number four, recommendations of the executive board twenty twenty five, twenty six revenue budget and council tax report, including reports on the capital programme and the treasury management strategy. We are now going to consider item four, the budget motion, an amendment as set out in appendix one of the order paper. So can I kindly ask that you all go to page five, please? Our leader, councillor Lewis, over to you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's going to start by recognising that this is the first speech made in the council chamber now that the walls contain the six plaques for six inspirational and trailblazing womanhoods. It's a really powerful statement about the city. Turning to the budget, Lord Mayor, I would just like to start by thanking our finance team led by Victoria Bradshaw for all their expertise to help us navigate these very difficult times and bring this budget forward. Councils are required to set a balanced budget, and if councils can't, then the power to make decisions is taken away from councillors and no new spending commitments can be made. It is a really important responsibility. In this council meeting, the Labour group are putting forward a balanced budget that does all it can to protect vital services and deliver what we need for the city. And I'd like to thank councillor Cooper in particular and the Labour group for working on bringing this budget forward. This council, like everyone across the country, is paying the price for austerity imposed over the last fourteen years. Austerity made it an almost impossible task for councils to balance their budget, and for several councils this became impossible. Central government funding for councils was slashed under the Conservatives, and it did not even keep up with inflation or demand for services. I would just like to remind council about how much money went from this council in the twenty ten decade of cuts under the Conservatives. In twenty eleven, twenty twelve, thirty-eight million pounds was cut. Twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, a further thirty-two point seven million pounds was cut. In twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, a further thirty-two point nine million pounds was cut. In twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, a further thirty-three million pounds was cut. In twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, a further forty-five point three million pounds was cut. In twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, thirty point one million pounds was cut. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty-five point one million pounds was cut. In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, a further fourteen point one million pounds was cut. And in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, fifteen point two million pounds was cut. So between twenty ten and twenty twenty-four, that was a total reduction of two hundred and forty-two million pounds per year, out of each and every year of council spending that was a cut. And that is a total cumulative reduction of over two point seven billion pounds over the fourteen years. This is the legacy we are dealing with. However, council, there is some good news in that we now have a Labour government, and in that time, we have already seen positive signs of a start to undo the damage caused by the Conservative government and their austerity. And I can see they're already excited. It sounds like they're already excited by it over there. Also, in that time, demand for services we are legally required to provide continues to increase. It's well documented how demand for both adults and children's social care has risen. The cost of supporting the most vulnerable continues to grow. This is something we are really proud to do with love and care as a council, and it really makes a difference to people in the city. Ten years ago, our spend on social care was five hundred and forty-five million pounds per year, and this year we are budgeting to spend eight hundred and sixty million pounds. That's an increase of three hundred and fifteen million pounds, and it means around sixty percent of our budget is now spent on social care. All councils are required to set a balanced budget despite not controlling what drives demand. We know that the number of older people and adults with learning disability needing care is up twenty percent in the last three years, with the budget up ten, a hundred million pounds in the same period. Our budget for the next year includes a further funding of ten point six million pounds to help meet that demand. The number of children needing care is also increasing, and the cost of care costs more to provide. This budget provides a staggering additional thirty-eight point one million pounds to help meet this. The bulk of demand is for children looked after at thirty-one point nine million, and this includes fifteen point two million pounds to meet our legal duty to ensure children in care have access to the right care and the support they need. In Leeds, over the last four years, cost associated with looking after children in external residential care has risen by seventy-five percent from sixty-eight million to hundred and nineteen million. And the average cost of an external residential placement has gone up by forty-five percent since twenty twenty-one, currently six thousand three hundred pounds a week, or three hundred and forty thousand pounds per year for each child being cared for. Cost for these children with especially complex needs, however, can be up to one million pounds per year per child. The system is broken, and it will take time to fix. It is a national crisis, and we have long said cross-party in this chamber that a national legislation is required to prevent excessive profit-making by private children's social care providers. The previous government didn't do this, but just before Christmas, the Labour government introduced the new Children's and Wellbeing Schools Bill to Parliament, and this includes measures to support a crackdown on that excessive profit-making, including a backstop law to potentially cap the profit private providers can make. Council, this is something we've been calling for in this chamber for a long time, so it is a very welcome development and something we need to see come into effect as soon as possible. Price increases and pressures means we must deliver savings of a hundred and three point eight million in the financial year by March twenty twenty-six. Key elements funding in this budget to meet these pressures include ten million pounds for general price inflation, thirty-four million pounds for pay inflation, and twenty-three point five million pounds to meet wage cost increases in commissioned services. The hundred and three point eight million figure is a saving one we must meet if we are to deliver our legally required balanced budget. This budget also includes an increase in council tax. One of the other legacies from the last fourteen years of Conservative government is a part of the council budget funded by council taxes increased, while at the same time the part of the budget funded by central government has gone down. Over the last fourteen years, the core general funding has decreased by almost seventy percent in real terms. In twenty ten, council tax made up less than half of our budget. This year, it's more than two-thirds. In twenty ten, forty-seven pence out of every pound the council spent was funded by council taxpayers and fifty-three pence by the budget. By twenty twenty-four, this has gone to sixty-seven percent, sixty-seven pence in every pound from council taxpayers and only thirty-three pounds, thirty-three pence in every pound from the government. The burden for funding council services passed from Conservative central government to local council taxpayers. To help meet the demand for services, this budget includes an increase of four point nine nine percent on council tax, of which one point nine nine percent is dedicated to adult social care costs. Council tax in Leeds remains the lowest of all call cities in England and at the midpoint for West Yorkshire councils, and our council tax support team will continue to provide discounts for everybody eligible. This budget reflects two changes to council tax legislation that allow the council to raise more funding locally. The first is we can now charge a premium for council tax on second homes. Under legislation from twenty twenty-three, we had to give second homeowners twelve months' notice about that charge. Last February, full council determined that the charge will be applied from the first of April twenty twenty-five, and I'm pleased this budget confirms the charge will be applied to second homes in Leeds from that date and could raise an additional two point five million pounds. The second is a change that reduced the period after which the premium can be applied to empty homes for two years to one. Full council agreed this in January twenty twenty-four, and likewise, I can confirm this budget confirms the premium applied and could raise an extra one point six million. We know from the budget consultation there is broad support for increases to council tax and fees and charges to help support council services. The budget includes an inflationary uplift on fees and charges. Given the severe financial pressures, proposed levels and fees and charges will remain under review to identify further potential to increase income. Under the HRA, the formula for increasing rent set out under the previous government remains in place, meaning a rent increase of two point seven percent. This will apply to service charges. For eligible tenants, the increases will be funded through housing benefit and universal credit will receive benefits for this increase. This applies to approximately seventy-four percent of tenants. Total additional rental income of five million is expected. Of this, four point one million will specifically be allocated to repairs budget and an increase into the capital programme to invest in new council homes. In terms of fees and charges, the budget also includes the introduction of pays who feel admission charges at city centre museums and galleries. We are fortunate in Leeds to have such a fantastic museum and gallery offer, but we do need to look at how they are funded in future, and this proposal is an indicative approach we want to take, growing fundraising while not placing barriers to culture for low-income visitors. The consultation on Abbey House Museum revealed the local support for this, and I'm pleased to confirm work is underway on improving the offer at Abbey House to keep it open, make sure it is more sustainable in the longer term. Moving to the impact of the budget on council staff. Given the huge increase in pressures on the budget next year, there is an estimated reduction of two hundred and thirty-four point eight full-time equivalent posts in the council. We remain committed to working closely with the trade unions to avoid, reduce and mitigate the needs for compulsory redundancies. This will include work on developing creative solutions, including voluntary measures as an alternative. Since twenty ten eleven, there has been an overall reduction of around three thousand five hundred employees, and during that time, through close work with the trade unions, we've operated a voluntary retirement and severance schemes, and it's clearly have already made a big contribution to us avoiding compulsory measures. The work will continue next year, but we can't say for certain that we won't be in a position where we need to look at compulsory redundancies regretfully. The council's budget position is also supported through our capital receipts programme, which in the last five years has generated a hundred and twenty million pounds to support council spending and investment priorities and reduce borrowing. Austerity under the previous government placed more importance than ever on this way to support the budget. Earlier this month, the executive board approved further work on the localities review. It was recognised in by the local government association's peer review in twenty twenty-two that the number of buildings under the council's responsibility was higher than needed, with many buildings underutilised, and with a substantial backlog of costly maintenance making the estate unaffordable to maintain. The review has identified a hundred and eighty-five properties classed as locality buildings, and the executive board confirmed the approach will include identifying those buildings which can be released based on the utilisation condition and the ability to relocate services to alternative buildings. The review will prioritise those buildings where service can be relocated with minimal impact on service delivery. Executive board has also agreed for several properties to be taken forward as suitable for community asset transfer. Ward members have been consulted on this, and we will continue to work with local community organisations to develop the capacity for them to take on buildings through the community asset transfer process. We had to use reserves to help balance last year's budget. When we are dealing with the financial pressures, we have to manage unpredictable demand pressures in children's and adult social care, or we have to sometimes respond to unexpected emergencies like flooding. The general reserves position is brought forward for this budget and stands at thirty-six point two million, and this is lower than comparable councils. Given the significant saving figure we need to deliver in this budget, at December executive board, the initial budget proposals proposed no base budget contribution to increase reserves. This was not the approach we wanted to take, but it was the right one given the scale of financial challenge facing the council next year. However, since December, we have received a local government finance settlement, and we can now use some of that funding to create a social care contingency reserve. This will reduce the risk on the council budget and services and protect the council next year from any unexpected emergencies or the predictable unpredicted demand for services. It is the responsible thing to do, and it will protect the council and all services across the city. We have also made provision for three million pounds in twenty-six, twenty-seven and subsequent years in the medium-term financial strategy to help the reserves position whilst minimising the impact on frontline services. The government's comprehensive spending review, expected to report in June, will have a big impact on our budget in future years. There are already many positive signs the Labour government is listening and responding to local government, and doesn't that make a change? We welcome the Deputy Prime Minister's commitment in her speech last October to reset the relationship to one based on honesty, respect and collaboration. This is a welcome change from the unfunded and undelivered promises under the last government. And let's not forget their broken promises on levelling up the northern powerhouse, new rail lines, ending rough sleeping, banning no-fault evictions, building forty hospitals, all false promises raised without the plan of funding ever to deliver them. As we head towards a spending review, the new government has already made commitments to local government funding, including bringing in three-year local government finance settlements to help us plan more effectively, to reduce the nonsense of competitive bidding and give local areas much more control over how funds are used, and to better respond to demand pressures with several reviews ongoing around the NHS, social care and children with send. The poor state of the public finances inherited by the government means there isn't a lot of spare money for public services, but we know they are reviewing the approach of local government funding. We have for a long time now called for a reform of the funding formulas to take more account of assessed needs, such as deprivation, and move away from the last prime minister who wanted more money spent in areas like Royal Tunbridge Wells. For this year, the one-year local government finance settlement announced by the government on the eighteenth of December is a welcome and sensible step while things are reviewed for the longer term. The total increase in core spending power for Leeds for the next year is sixty-seven million pounds. This includes an extra nineteen point four million pounds through the government's new recovery grant targeted at councils with high levels of deprivation, an additional twelve point four million pounds through the social care grant, an additional five point one million pounds through the children's social care prevention grant, an additional three point nine million pounds for the new homes bonus, and an additional two point six million pounds through the settlement funding assessment. We've also received increases in the domestic abuse safe accommodation grant and the homelessness prevention grant. So a significant increase from the Labour government's first local government financial settlement, and this will make a big difference to council services in Leeds. And it's pleasing that additional funding reflects some of the circumstances we were pointing out many years to the former government, things like taking account of deprivation and additional needs for social care. And it shows the Labour count's government is taking a lot of action to support local government. It's much better than the sticking plaster solutions we saw from the last government, and we now wait to see what the longer-term reforms mean. We will continue in this budget council our commitment to support low-paid council workers by paying the recently announced real living wage rate of twelve pounds sixty an hour, with an hourly rate above that at twelve pounds sixty-nine an hour for our lower-paid workers. Leeds City council services are provided by one of the largest in-house workforces of any council in the country, and it's something we are rightly proud of, and a workforce we want to make sure is properly paid. This budget also includes funding to continue our commitment to the ethical care charter, so workers in commissioned services can be paid the real living wage as well. We welcome the government's commitment to increase the national living wage by six point seven percent to twelve pounds twenty-one, and the national minimum wage for eighteen to twenty-year-olds by sixteen point three percent to ten pounds, to apply from the first of April, giving all low-paid workers much-needed pay rise. We're also clear that we support the government Employment Rights Bill. This is legislation that will improve the lives of thousands of workers in Leeds. We welcome the bill that will give better protection to workers in Leeds from unfair dismissal, improve parental and bereavement leave rights, and strengthen sick pay and bringing stronger protections for pregnant women. And none of us will forget that the Conservative group voted against these proposals when we brought it to council last November. The new homes bonus element of the additional funding is linked to the development of housing in the city. Leeds received a total of six point two million pounds in new homes bonus from the government, an increase of three point nine million in the previous year. This is because Leeds has led the way nationally with new housing delivery in recent years. And whilst the Conservative government didn't address the housing crisis, under this administration, we've seen the highest levels of new homes built since the nineteen eighties in Leeds. We have been responsible as a council for around one point five percent of all new homes in England over the last five years, and this underlines our commitment to deliver the improvements our city needs, the housing our residents needs, and we're committed to work with the Labour government in stepping up delivery in this area. We are absolutely committed in that to ensure that new housing is affordable, so it's a good sign that over the same period, Leeds has built more new affordable homes than any other city outside London. We are also committed to delivering more social rented homes, and again, we are leading the way on delivery nationally on this, with over three times as many social rented homes delivered in Leeds than the national average, so thirty-six percent of new homes are social rented homes compared to a national average of twelve point four percent. Our council house growth programme has seen schemes completed in wards across the city. Nearly sixteen hundred new affordable homes have been delivered through this programme. When you add in new affordable homes delivered by our partners in the third sector registered providers and through section one oh six agreements, in the last five years, two thousand nine hundred new affordable homes in total have been completed in the city. And there are more to come, with six hundred and fifty in the current year increasing substantially to twelve hundred next year, giving an average of around nine hundred and forty new affordable homes across two years. This will be the highest level of affordable housing delivery in thirty years, since the mid nineteen nineties, and council will remember this is far higher than when the Conservatives and Lib Dems ran this council. Some of the schemes completed in recent years are due to complete or start on site. Our one hundred and sixteen thousand in the, sorry, one hundred and sixteen, one hundred and sixteen thousand, wish we could build that many, one hundred and sixteen in the throttles in Middleton, fifty-five in the Ambertons in Gipton, and eighty-three at Hufftop in Pudsey, with not just general needs housing, but adopted bungalows in Middleton and Gipton. And we're also committed to improving existing council houses. The capital programme includes three hundred and seventy-nine point eight million pounds for our housing Leeds refurbishment programme. This prioritises improving the energy efficiency of home regeneration in our priority neighbourhoods, fire safety improvements and maintaining decency standards across our council housing. We've received national recognition at the UK Housing Awards, and there is a desperate need across many communities for more good quality, affordable housing, and we will continue our work to address this in Leeds, and this budget supports that. This also includes our record in delivering new extra care housing for older people, with over five hundred units delivered in recent years. And recently, it's include sites at Gascoigne House in Middleton, the Sycamores in Waddlesford, and Hunn's at Moore House, and with sixty-five units coming at the Middle Cross site in Armley starting soon. And when I was in Waddlesford to help open a new scheme, I spoke to a resident there who had previously been living in two rooms of a two-up, two-down terrace house at the bottom of a steep hill, who couldn't get around that easily. And having been able to move from really unsuitable housing into the new flats that we had built, had completely changed his life to have those facilities on board, and it showed why our commitment to new housing and the right housing and to supporting many people in Leeds with housing is the right thing for us to do, and we will continue to do that. Our Home First Intermediate Care Scheme promotes independent living among older people and is having a significant impact on those who've stayed in hospital. Its introduction has seen people benefit from re-ablement services in their own home to go home directly from hospital instead of going into a recovery hub, and we've seen a nineteen percent increase in the proportion of people leaving the service fully independent and a thirty-three percent decrease in hospital readmission rates. Based on this performance, this is equivalent of a financial saving of six point three million pounds per year to the council in the avoidance of long-term care costs, and of course, as well, it's giving people a much better quality of life. The city's neighbourhood networks play a vital role in helping people to continue living independently in their own communities. We have worked in collaboration with the networks ever since, and in the middle of the continuing budget cuts and uncertainty under the former government, we again made the decision to protect the networks and we issued a five-year grant settlement. We recognise the essential support the networks provide for older people, and it's vital moving forward they remain on a stable financial footing. The initial budget proposals in December included a proposed three hundred thousand pounds saving across the network. We consulted with the networks, and it is clear for many that there was concerns about their financial stability. We welcome the feedback from the networks, and I'm pleased to say our final budget confirms this saving will now not be implemented. We can afford to do this by using some of the additional extra funding from the Labour government in the local government financial settlement. It's possible, if we still had a Conservative government, we would have not been able to make the, find the funding to make that decision. We also know from the feedback from the network through the consultation that they are keen to continue working with us to ensure they are making the best use of all their resources moving forward and ensure that support remains in place, and we are committed to doing that. Long-serving members of the council, like myself, who were around in twenty ten, will remember that when we took power back from the former Conservative-Lib Dem arrangements, one of the first things we had to do was to clear up the mess they had left, which was a set of proposals that would have meant some of the neighbourhood networks would have had their funding removed completely, and I'm pleased we will continue to work with the neighbourhood networks. We are committed to supporting the most vulnerable in this city, and another thing we still would have had if we'd have still had a Conservative government is the two point six million pounds in additional grant funding for homelessness prevention. The government made that commitment clear in the autumn budget to get the country back on track to reducing and hopefully ending homelessness. The additional grant funding will help prevent a rise of families in temporary accommodation and help prevent rust sleeping. Overall, the increase brings our total grant funding in this area to just over nine million pounds. We will continue to prioritise support through the household support fund to the most vulnerable residents, and we welcome that the government has confirmed the extension of this fund for the next financial year. We are still waiting for details of the amount we receive, but we plan to use the funding in the same way to provide the support for the most vulnerable and low-income households. This winter, we used part of the funding to support low-income pensioners in receipt of council tax support, but no longer in receipt of the winter fuel payments. This work was completed by our Leeds Pension Credit Working Group, who led targeted work to identify individuals potentially eligible for pension and credit but not claiming. This has so far resulted in a total benefit gain of three thousand six hundred This has so far resulted in a total benefit gain of three thousand six hundred and sixty-six pounds per week, or one hundred and ninety thousand pounds per year overall with the work ongoing. And this has meant by the end of January, seven thousand three hundred pensioners in Leeds, not in receipt of winter fuel payment, but in receipt of council tax support, received winter support payments from the council of one hundred and fifty pounds. The latest data from twenty-two, twenty-three shows in Leeds overall, one hundred and seventy-six thousand people are living in poverty, including three, thirty-three thousand children. And we welcome the government's commitment to tackling child poverty, including this week, the announcement of the Nation Ride Pilot of Free Breakfast Clubs, with ten schools in Leeds taking part. Under the new government, we can start rebuilding services and turn things around, and in this budget, we continue to support the work of our Welfare Rights Unit, which supports many people in need, and the number of benefits checks the team carries out has increased by twenty-four percent in the last year, which is a really important work in the city. Moving to our commitments around public health. Remember, under the last government, our Public Health Grant suffered significant real-term cuts since twenty fifteen. The Public Health Grant last year, under the Conservative government, increased by one point three percent, so didn't even meet inflationary costs. This year, under the Labour government, our grant has increased by five point four percent to a total allocation of fifty-three point two million pounds. And we have committed to Leeds becoming a marmot city with the aim of improving health with a focus on tackling inequality. This administration is committed to continuing our work with partners to tackle antisocial behaviour, and this budget includes a total expenditure of seventeen point nine million pounds on community safety-related initiatives. We know this work was made hard by the impact of austerity and the cuts to police numbers by the previous government. Between twenty-ten and twenty-seventeen, police expenditure fell by sixteen point two percent and remained below twenty-ten levels as recently as twenty-twenty-three, another essential public service that needs rebuilding. In December, Yvette Cooper, Home Secretary, announced one billion funding boost for policing to help keep streets safe. Nationally, it's included a hundred million pounds to pay for more neighbour officers, with a commitment to the new neighbourhood policing guarantee, meaning a new named and contactable police office in every community to deal with local issues. We are working as well locally on to tackle antisocial behaviour. We introduced the neighbourhood improvement partnerships in part of the city. We've worked to curb antisocial behaviour in tower blocks, and our work to tackle the risk of serious youth violence and criminal exploitation was praised by inspectors under our joint targeted area inspection. And the government also awarded West Yorkshire a further one million pounds in October to tackle antisocial behaviour, neighbourhood crime, and violence against women's and girls. White Ribbon Day in November was followed by sixteen days of activism as part of the international campaign calling for prevention and elimination of violence against women and girls. This has included a campaign to promote support for services such as the Leeds Domestic Violence Service, Support After Rape, and Violence Leeds, Ask Angela Leeds, and Walk Safe Leeds. I'm going to turn to the active Leeds service, which has shown real improvement in our leisure centres through Investorsave Programme and infrastructure funding where we've used our capital and potential borrowing. These service improvements have been wide-ranging, from investment into gym refurbishment, maintenance investments, air circulation systems, pool plant rooms, decarbonisation works, and redecoration work, which made such a difference. We've invested over two point five million pounds into eight gym refurbishments right across the city's leisure centres, including Pudsey, Garforth, Morley, John Charles, Rothwell, Wetherby, Scott Hall, Armley, and Garforth, and John Smeaton and Holt Park are due to finish soon. Each development has seen an average investment of around two hundred and fifty thousand pounds in new equipment and work to lighting floors and repainting the place. These investments have supported substantial growth to health and fitness memberships, growing from twenty-three thousand in February twenty-twenty to over thirty-two thousand members, and it shows that this is a public service we are delivering well, and the people of Leeds are prepared to pay for and use. And it shows that we can deliver financially sustainable services for the future as well, and something that shows public services at their best in this city. Getting service on the more sustainable financial footing is vital for the future. In the initial budget proposals prevented in December, we launched a consultation on the future of bowling greens in the city. We have listened to the feedback and changed the original proposals, and in January, we provided an update to confirm that all Crown Green bowling facilities will be maintained until the end of the sport summer season. Through the consultation, we received some alternative suggestions that we are considering as part of our revised programme, and we have confirmed we will now carry out a second phase of the consultation, directly with individual clubs to find a way to minimise any closures and secure the best way forward in the longer term. We have shown it's possible to put services on a different footing in other areas, including our museums and galleries. The statistics show the service has welcomed just under a million visitors last year, and we know the significant impact this brings to the city. Council museums and galleries generated forty-one million pounds for the local economy last year, and the seven shops and three cafes in our museums and galleries generated an income of around one point three million pounds, an increase of thirteen percent on the previous year. And Leeds City Museum is currently inviting visitors to celebrate a very special birthday to mark the seventieth anniversary of Miffy, the iconic rabbit that has been part of so many childhoods around the world. Miffy has had an amazing number of visitors, probably far more than will be watching this meeting online, I don't know why, and in her, and in her first week, she had fifteen thousand visitors, which compares to nineteen thousand visitors in the whole of February last year. And while the exhibition is free for everybody, takings in the museum shop have risen significantly, which is supporting the service. And Leeds continues to be the host city for UK Reef, which generated twenty-one million pounds for the economy last year through visitors, and saw thirteen thousand people come to Leeds to talk about property and regeneration. It used to be that people had to go to the south of France for events like this, but we've convinced them that standing by a canal in Leeds city centre is just as good, and it's an incredible success story for the city and gives us a real opportunity to show, to show the city off to people. Turning to some of the capital investment that was taking place, and it was great news that the Chancellor confirmed in the Autumn Budget funding for the DFE School Rebuilding Programme. We have nominated five schools to the programme, resulting in the successful inclusion of Wetherby and East Leeds Specialist Learning Centre, as well as three academies, including Ulton Academy. Despite not being initially selected under the last government, our persistence ensured that Leeds schools were included and have been continually supported, including significant repairs and exploring alternative sites for rebuilding. The council also independently advanced the rebuilding of the South Silk to meet the growing demand for send places after being rejected by the last government in twenty-twenty-two. And I think this commitment to building new schools is a real contrast, again, to people who can think back to twenty-ten when the Building Schools for the Future Programme was scrapped right at the start of the Conservative government, and many of the rebuilding schemes were never seen again. Our capital programme also continues major investment in infrastructure linked to our vision to meet net zero, and I'd like to thank those members of SEAC from around the council chamber, I know you work very closely on a cross-party basis, for bringing this important work forward, and we heard about the progress at the last council meeting. In September, the government confirmed the continuation of the Public Sector Decarbonisation Scheme to support public buildings to switch to cleaner heating and to cut emissions, and the government has agreed a further seven million pounds for Leeds towards this, and we expect to confirm this decision in May. So far, over two thousand residential and non-residential buildings are now connected to our Leeds Pipes Heating Scheme. It is really well-established and a credit to our city, having won lots of awards, and the scheme is predicted to expand into the South Bank with twenty-four point five million pounds funding secured to cover another twenty-eight buildings and eight thousand residents. And we've also got three point one million pounds of grant funding for the Wellington Street Extension. It is not just important for net zero and giving people and businesses affordable energy, but it is also income generating and saved five thousand nine hundred and forty-five tonnes of carbon through the network, and customers save nearly half a million pounds in reduced energy cost. Not only does Leeds Pipes help towards net zero and reducing energy costs, it is also good for our economy, providing highly specialist jobs and apprenticeships to ensure people are skilled in these areas. Our Employment and Skills Plan has been refreshed to include work to promote green skills, and it is expected that a further seventy thousand green jobs will be created in this area in West Yorkshire in the next twenty-five years. We have shown the economic benefits of investing in clean energy, and we welcome we now have a government that is serious about this with a push for clean power by twenty-thirty through the plan in place. And also, not just about jobs, but volunteers are really important to our journey to net zero. In twenty-nineteen, the council committed to planting five point eight million trees over the next twenty-five years, and significant progress has been made with thirty-nine planting schemes ongoing, and we estimate around twenty-four thousand volunteering hours have gone into supporting this. Shows that residents are doing their bit. We've seen people doing a lot on recycling, reusing, and reducing waste schemes, including the school uniform exchange and opening the third revive shop in Hunsett this year. Council, at the start of this speech, I noted this is the first budget council meeting under a Labour government in fifteen years. The government is already making positive progress on issues of huge significance to the deep challenges facing this council's financial position. Additional government funding means we are in a better position to meet the challenges of increasing demand in children's services. The budget includes thirty-one million to, for children looked after, but we know that change in innovation to the way services are delivered is also a key part to dealing with the additional demand. That's why we're taking forward key innovations in children's services, supporting investment in early hub, family hub, fostering and local children's homes to give greater control over the future quality and outcomes for children and families. We have a three-year implementation plan, and work is already underway, and we are seeing the benefits with the expected savings of fifteen million pounds next year. The overall number of children looked after has reduced for the first time in a very long time, and that is a real credit to our children's and family services. Just like to touch on some of the innovations that are helping to make an impact in this area. So the reunification team was established to support children and young people to be reunited with immediate or wider family, where safe resulting in a lower use of expensive residential support. So far in the current financial year, nine children have been reunified from residential support. The residential support placements are expensive, so over a course of a full year, that saving based on nine children works out at around three point eight million pounds. Another innovation to help reduce costs is the development of our small group living homes, and I'd just like to thank all those councillors in the council chamber who have worked to support those proposals where they've come forward in people's wards. The aim of the programme is to increase the number of in-house council registered residential homes, creating more places for children to remain in the city rather than in more expensive external placement. As we had reported to Executive Board, seven homes have been bought and refurbished, four homes now have young people accommodated in, and a further two homes are in the process of being purchased. Our fostering service supports over four hundred fostering placements and three hundred and fifty children living with kinship or connected carers across Leeds. So far this year, the service has recruited one hundred and thirty new carers, including eighty-six new kinship carers, allowing to children to remain within their family. This is a key aim, it is better for children to live with their families. And all this innovation work means that more looked-after children continue to live in Leeds, and they remain close to their friends, families, and communities, and it also helps to get our budget on a more sustainable footing. From twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen, we had fourteen years of austerity, that's all the decimation of former vital services. We also saw fourteen years of failure to invest in essential infrastructure, many promises not delivered or not funded properly, and we can talk about transport, housing, and hospitals. All of this led to fourteen years of slow to non-existent economic growth. We now have a government on a mission to turn things around. In terms of, I'm glad to see I'm supported by the opposition benches as well on this as well. In terms of housing and regeneration, we continue to work with the government through the Leeds Transformational Regeneration Partnership, which aims to deliver five hundred thousand new homes within and adjacent to the city centre over the next ten to twenty years. Last week, ten million pounds was confirmed for the Historic Temple Works Building, paving the way for it to become the home of the New British Library, and five million pounds was committed to create the new National Poetry Centre, and there was a risk last week I could have delivered this entire speech in rhyming verse. Both of those schemes were named by the last government, but both of those schemes were unfunded until the last general election, and I'm now able to please to confirm that the funding has been confirmed and will be in place, and these schemes will be delivered. Likewise, we've seen thirty-five million pounds now allocated to help the council take forward the Dawson's Corner Junction improvements, which will help improve traffic flow in that part of Leeds, and we'll also see the infrastructure there for future growth. In the Autumn Statement, the government confirmed its backing of nearly sixty million pounds of levelling up funds for the Heart of Holbeck scheme, including the refurbishment of St Matthew's Community Centre, the expansion of the Holbeck Together Community Facilities into the Leeds Building Society building next door, the improvement of public realm and green space, and the retrofit of back-to-back housing in the area to improve energy efficiency. This scheme focuses on major investment in the part of the city as some of the highest levels of deprivation, worst housing, and is a real good example of our commitment to inclusive growth and regeneration. And if anybody wants a lift till a day or week going to visit Holbeck Together, and the great work that happens there is something to do, and we're really pleased to have a government that is putting money behind work like that. The government have also committed to supporting the delivery of the West Yorkshire tram, something we have waited for for a long time, we now have a commitment to deliver on this project for the future of our economy. We look forward to working with the Combined Authority and the government on making this happen. We are also incredibly supportive of the Combined Authority's bus reform. Last year, Mayor Brabham took the historic step of recommending bus franchising as the best way to improve our buses in Leeds. For the first time since the nineteen eighties, this will bring buses back under public control, and we'll see them working for people in Leeds, not for the private bus companies. And we heard last month at the Combined Authority about the progress that's been taken, and we look forward to seeing the first contracts by, let by the end of this year, with the first buses on the road by the spring of twenty-twenty-seven. This could have all happened a lot quicker, but actually now we've got a Labour mayor, a Labour government, and a Labour council working to make this happen. We will continue our work to improve day-to-day services for residents. The council continues to prioritise and invest in our bin service. In December, the Executive Board approved a three-bin strategy for Leeds that will ensure households can recycle more from home, but without the need for an extra bin days of clutter on street and collections more complicated than they need to be. Thanks to the successful introduction of Glass in the Green Bin from August, Leeds residents are able to put plastics, film, cardboard, paper, metals, and glass into the one recycling bin, and in January, nearly one thousand one hundred tonnes of glass was recycled from Leeds Green Bin, so somebody had a good Christmas there. Our Bottle Bank network still provides a choice for residents with a further, I wasn't looking at you, councillor Harland. Oh, I didn't mean to. Our Bottle Bank network still provides choice for residents with a further three hundred tonnes of glass being collected in them from January, and over eighty percent of all the glass collected is being remelted to make new bottles and jars here in Yorkshire. In twenty-twenty-four, the council also successfully increased the green bin recycling collections for ten thousand households that missed out when fortnightly collections were first introduced. Another forty thousand households will shortly see their green bin collections increased, with those in the most densely populated areas such as Headingly Hyde Park and Hair Hills moving on to a green bin collection. This will mean for the first time in Leeds, every household in Leeds will have a minimum of a fortnightly recycling collection. Importantly, no one will have their black bin collections reduced as part of these plans. We also hope to be able to announce later this year the option for homes to put food waste in their brown bins, and for the brown bin collection being extended to an all-year-round service and to more households in the city. And I'd just like to compare Leeds under a Labour administration to what you get under Conservative councils, where our next-door neighbours in North Yorkshire announced this week that their residents will have to pay forty-nine pounds a year for their garden waste collection. That's the cost of a Conservative council compared to the fact that residents in Leeds get this service for free. Another statistic of interest relates to our progress on tackling fly tipping. The crackdown through our serious environmental crime team saw a fifteen percent reduction last year in fly tipping compared to one percent nationally, and this is just part of our successful fight against fly tipping, where we hope to get that reduction down even more. The free collection of up to five bulky waste items, the successful launch of the innovative accredited waste carrier scheme for Leeds, continue to support residents to do the right thing and avoid using unscrupulous waste removal companies. Unlike many councils, we continue to invest in our eight household waste and recycling sites across Leeds, free for residents to use, and open seven days a week all year round. Last year, we saw vehicles crushed and over fifty-five fixed penalty notices for fly tipping issued. The fight against fly tipping littering is also about supporting those in our communities our communities that want to make a difference and to change in public attitude and I'd really like to pay tribute to the impact made by the purple bag laden army of residents who regularly go out and litter pick in their communities there's so many brilliant individuals that get out and do it and groups organise it across the city I dared mention one in case I don't mention any but litter-free Leeds provides a brilliant umbrella for those organisations and we look to have looking forward to the conference of them in this building early next month council we will continue to drive our best council ambition and the overall vision for the future of our city at its heart is a mission to tackle poverty and inequality and to improve the life everybody who calls Leeds home our three pillars are at the centre of the best city ambition they capture the things that will make the biggest difference to improving people's lives in Leeds up to twenty thirty and beyond and the many big challenges we face and the best opportunities we have to all three the first is to make Leeds a healthy and caring city for everyone where those who are most likely to experience poverty improve their mental and physical health the fastest with health and care inequalities reducing and people being supported to thrive from early years to later life key to list are the links between health and housing which is why we welcome the record number of new houses in this city and the record number of new affordable houses to come and we look forward to the government's consultation on the reform of right to buy and we're absolutely clear right to buy needs to become to an end and we look about how we will build our affordable housing in the city the next is our aim to be the first net zero city in the UK rapidly reducing carbon emissions and reversing the decline in biodiversity while supporting people to make the most sustainable choices which can improve their standard of living we've been recognised as one of the hundred and twenty-two city authorities across the world leading the way on climate action receiving an A grade from the carbon disclosure project the final pillar in our best city ambition vision is inclusive growth our aim is for Leeds to be a place where we create create growth in our economy that works for everybody where people and businesses can thrive and where we work together to tackle poverty and equality Leeds has historically maintained a high employment rate with a robust and broad-based economy which has equipped the city in the past to ride out many economic shocks we are only one of two core cities in the country that is a net contributor to the treasury Leeds is one of the UK's leading centres for financial and professional services which is valued at two point one billion pounds for our economy with more than thirty national or international banks based here we are home to twenty-two percent of the UK's digital health technology jobs and over two thousand twenty thousand net zero jobs our ten-year comprehensive regeneration plan will focus on a number of neighbourhoods around the city centre including Mabgate east side Hunset Riverside South Bank Holbeck and the Innovation Arc unlocking and supporting the delivery of twenty thousand new homes we also want the benefits of economic growth across the city and we're looking at making sure that we are working to develop sites right across Leeds including the north-west Leeds employment hub near the airport Thorpe Park in East Leeds and the White Rose Park in South Leeds all areas where we want to see high-quality investment coming in and we are working to deliver the infrastructure needed to do that we've seen Leeds as a launchpad of really successful businesses with thousands of startups each year the Innovation Arc is a is a made-in-Leeds initiative pioneering a fresh approach to collaboration knowledge sharing and co-production looking to more economic growth this connects some of the key cities institutions together and will help build businesses for the future we were chosen by the government to be the home of the first infrastructure bank which will invest in public and private projects across the UK for example through the newly announced seven point three billion pound national wealth fund part of the current government's plan to boost growth and investment in in the entire country and I think it's telling of our significance both the last government and the current government have chosen to locate key financial institution in the cities we continue to work with the Leeds anchors network which brings together the city's largest employees employers to focus on areas where they can make a difference to people through procurement and spending in the city through service delivery and as a good partner in the city together the organisations employ over fifty-eight thousand people of whom a quarter live in the most disadvantaged areas in Leeds and these institutions spend over eight hundred million pounds in the city economy we're also working with the Leeds community anchor a network of locally rooted community organisations to understand how large anchor employers can address barriers to employment and get more people into work from our most deprived communities in recent years we've also set up the Leeds business anchors as well another group of organisations committed to making sure that economic growth delivers benefits to everybody right across the city council we're looking to the future we now have a government committed to cleaning up the mess left by the last government and investing in public services we have seen additional funding provided in this budget meaning an increase of spending power of over sixty-seven million pounds for next year including the recovery grant to recognise and the pressures in the social care system and while we wait for wider reform through the comprehensive spending review this is a sensible measure that has allowed us to protect council services and puts our budget on a more stable footing for the year ahead as we head towards a spending review in June we welcome the new government's commitment to reviewing the way local governments are funded we welcome the commitments already made including the three-year local government finance settlements that will help us plan more effectively commitments to give us local areas more control how the funds are used and most importantly the commitment to how we can all better respond to the pressure in social care that we've all talked about council I am moving a budget that is a sensible budget is a first part of the council's recovery it provides support for local services for transport for investment in our services and for opportunity and I move the budget
Thank you councillor Lewis I will now call on councillor Cooper to second the budget motion
Lord Mayor thank you can I second and reserve the right to speak
Thank you councillor Lamb to move the amendments one to nine
Thank you Lord Mayor it's our four hundredth birthday next year in Leeds I don't know if everyone realised that and Leeds has a rich and vibrant history shaped by resilience and innovation as Joshua Tetley once said Leeds is a city of workers a city of change a city of enterprise this city has always been built on hard work resilience and a spirit of innovation from the mills and factories of our past to the cutting-edge businesses of today the people of Leeds have never been afraid of rolling up their sleeves and getting the job done I'm here indeed I think we're all here to capture and harness that spirit and to change the communities we serve and the city we love for the better we're here to do whatever we can to make the lives of people across our city better sadly I believe that while undoubtedly well-intentioned the labour administration running this council has lost its way it has forgotten why it's here and who it's for it's too busy focused on its own internal problems rather than trying to improve the lives of people in our communities the council's become too big too bossy and too bureaucratic all too often it thinks the council and only the council knows best there's no doubt that we face great challenges and great uncertainty locally nationally and globally it feels that we are simultaneously faced with incredible opportunity and grave danger it leaves us a clear choice do everything possible to harness that Tetley spirit or to harness the Keir Starmer alternative of drowning in a tepid kettle of managed decline all budgets are about choices this administration's budget embraces the Starmer approach as a pub landlord it seems appropriate that I choose the Tetley approach and that is the alternative vision for Leeds that I will set out today it's beyond question that the last fifteen years or so have been extremely challenging I know the members opposite like to start history in twenty ten but history is shaped by events and not dates the two thousand eight financial crash was a huge reset moment for the global economy european countries have lagged sluggishly behind the rest of the world since then including ours there is merited criticism of my party's time in government but there is also a great deal to be proud of and we are often too reticent to celebrate the many achievements the last labour government left an actual black hole of a hundred and fifty billion pounds a year the conservatives cut that deficit by over eighty percent created over four million new jobs introduced the national living wage delivered the democratic result of the Brexit referendum unlocked record investment in the NHS protected pensions with the triple lock built over two million new homes hired twenty thousand more police officers cut carbon emissions faster than any other major economy delivered super fast broadband to ninety-seven percent of the country massively raised school standards with more than ten thousand more good and outstanding schools made UK pupils the best in the west for reading maths and science legalized gay marriage signed over seventy post Brexit trade deals we supported the economy through Covid giving the NHS the resources it needed securing the vaccine and protecting livelihoods with the furlough scheme we led the world in supporting Ukraine and nursed the economy through the resulting global cost of living crisis was everything perfect far from it there are many reasons we lost the last election we had lost our way much like this labour administration in Leeds but the fact remains that we left the country and particularly the economy and public finances in much better shape than we found them we handed over the fastest growing economy in the G7 they're the facts they don't like them Lord Mayor it has taken labour less than a year to unravel many of the economic gains with most of the real pain yet to be felt they repeatedly claim they found an unexpected twenty-two billion pound black hole in the public finances while conveniently forgetting that half of that was down to inflation busting pay rises for people already earning double the average UK wage with no productivity gains asked for in return what they've never explained is why to fill this fictitious black hole of twenty-two billion they needed to raise taxes by seventy billion none of which they had mentioned before the election Lord Mayor while Sir Keir and his colleagues were hoovering up Taylor Swift tickets new outfits glasses and handbags they were simultaneously taking the winter fuel allowance from pensioners free gear for Keir but no heating for granny you would think that the son of a toolmaker would have been able to put together his own wardrobe Rachel Reeves
please could we allow councillor Lamb to speak please thank you
thank you Lord Mayor I've got all afternoon there's no rush Rachel Reeves made sure she took good care of her own expenses while attacking farmers and ramping up the cost of employing people for businesses up and down the country make no mistake the massive increase in national insurance combined with lowering the threshold at which it is paid is a tax on jobs and ultimately a tax on the hard-working people of our city and our country a broken promise by labour they even broke their promise to this council they promised they would compensate you in full for the increased national insurance costs and they lied they've left you three point nine million pounds short an actual black hole in council finances and that's before we get on the costs to social care third-party providers charities and others that are not having those costs met by the government or by this council the consequences for all of us as a result of Rachel Reeves first budget lower growth higher interest rates higher inflation higher mortgage costs just today higher energy costs cancelled hospitals lower living standards and less money for public services the only thing that's disappearing faster than Rachel Reeves credibility are the hastily deleted messages about pensioners in labour whatsapp groups of course you wouldn't think it but Rachel Reeves is a Leeds MP she is one of two Leeds MPs sat round the cabinet table one thing the leader didn't want to talk about in his speech was the LGI she campaigned vigorously for the rebuild of Leeds General Infirmary with the Innovation Arc that goes with it it was a regular feature of her election leaflets so what did Rachel Reeves do when she won her seat became the first female chancellor and took control of the nation's purse strings she found money for train drivers money for Ed Miliband's mad schemes and eighteen billion pounds to bonk to Mauritius while conceding UK sovereign territory but no money for the new hospital and economic investment for the city she is supposed to represent shameful had this been done to Manchester Andy Burnham would have been all over the airwaves demanding the government think again but where was our mayor where was our mayor she didn't even want to talk about this at the recent combined authority meeting Lord Mayor we know members opposite were expecting to receive more money from a labour government had councillor Lewis have been talking about an identical settlement from a conservative government he would have stood up and trashed it that's not good enough not good enough for Leeds letting us down selling us short but unlike what Keir Starmer promised like so many things it is party first city second we know they thought they were going to have more money they thought they would be awash with cash which is why they have ploughed on with all of their vanity schemes the financial backdrop to this budget is not what they expected they have a deficit of a hundred and four million pounds with inflation now rising again thanks to Rachel Reeves putting additional pressure on our finances as the leader pointed out we now have a labour government a labour mayor and a labour council one in every five pounds the council spends next year will go on debt repayments paying off debt accrued by this administration our services are stretched our roads are crumbling and people feel they are paying more while getting less it's little wonder that councillor Lewis felt the need to arrange sessions to deal with the anxiety among his members many of the financial pressures the council now faces have been made right here in Leeds let's talk about the council's vanity projects such as the Year of Culture which cost over eleven million pounds while the events may have concluded in twenty twenty-three the costs are still rising members will recall a loan of one point nine million pounds made by the council to Leeds twenty twenty-three to temporarily cover their VAT contributions we were assured they would be returned we had two sets of independent legal advice that confirmed this I strongly questioned the risk of this at the time in the executive board and was shouted and voted down it now turns out that HMRC has rejected parts of the claim and the council stands to lose somewhere between a quarter of a million pounds and nine hundred thousand pounds millions wasted by labour in Leeds and our residents and communities are left to pick up the bill what about all the cycle lanes the inaccessible city centre the unwanted lawns would round about and the braving bikes that have bombed and are about to get another million pound plus in public subsidy they keep saying they don't have any money but they always find it when it's something they want to do tens of millions wasted that could have been better spent on the things our residents actually want Lord Mayor we must embrace the Leeds spirit that Joshua Tetley described the spirit of resilience innovation and determination and on this side of the chamber we have a plan to deliver it I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Victoria Bradshaw Richard Ellis and all of the finance team for their invaluable assistance in bringing our amendments together their dedication and hard work have been instrumental in shaping our proposals we've taken a different approach to our amendments this year we firmly believe as we've set out many times that the council should adopt a zero-based budgeting approach now advocated by the interim finance director of the combined authority and many others clearly from opposition this is not something we can attempt but we have worked in great detail on a number of areas where we have shown how significant efficiencies savings and productivity gains can be made every member of our group has been involved in the process of preparing our amendments we've had many working groups and away days with powerful contributions from every member I want to thank them all for the work they've put in to the budget this year along with our office staff and I particularly like to thank councillor Billy Flynn who has absolutely gone above and beyond driven by his single desire to improve people's lives for the better we've also worked with several other councils across the country and a large number of private and third sector organisations who have also contributed to our work I wonder how many of the backbench members of the labour group can say the same are the decisions are the decisions in this budget really yours are they really the things you got elected to make have you been involved Have you been involved in deciding where your acts will fall? Did the members representing Geisley really choose to close their local schools? I don't recall the Horsteth members campaigning to introduce parking charges in their community. I don't recall the Labour members in Gipton proclaiming on their leaflets, vote for us so we can cut the funding for your neighbourhood networks. Putting up people's fees and charges, delivering less for more, cutting services, I don't believe that's what you came here to do, and yet it's what your administration is proposing in your name. Our alternative approach would not stop at the budget setting but would reform the whole way the organisation runs. The reason I wanted every member of my group to be involved in the process is that I passionately believe that they know what is best for the communities they live in and serve. I want to see the council devolve far more to local members via community committees, more decisions taken as close as possible to the people they affect. And so you will see, weave through our amendments, a consistent theme of more services delivered and directed locally. Community safety, tree management, youth activities, green spaces, street cleaning and so much more can and should be delivered more effectively and efficiently by local members taking control in their own communities. We'd provide money directly to local members to enable more community events such as bonfires and Christmas lights which on. And we would reinstate and enhance the sort of free events we used to have, such as party and opera in the park, events that show the difference between our approach and yours. When we ran these events, they were free to the public, made a surplus for the council. When you took over, you introduced charges, the profit turned to a loss and you cut off everybody else's noses to spite your face by cancelling the events. It's clear that the lessons have not been learnt. Our approach would recognise the unique nature of the communities that make up Leeds. We would trust that the elected members are best placed to deliver local services for their area and put the power and resources in all of your hands to do it. Contrast this with the current attempts to gerrymander and scale back community committees that the Labour administration are asking you to vote for today. Of course, it would be churlish not to point out that some of the decisions you've made in this budget are on the right track. It's just that in many cases they don't go far enough or fast enough. When it comes to embracing technology and innovation, for example, dipping your toe in the water would be a good start, but you've still got your shoes and socks on. You've not even flashed a bit of ankle at the water. There is so much opportunity to be more productive and deliver better services for less money for the people we all represent. The problem is that this Labour administration genuinely doesn't believe that these savings can be made, which is why they've resorted to cutting the things that people rely on while charging them more for the privilege. It's not easy, but it can be done. When you focus on outcomes and outputs rather than inputs and processes and rigid ideology, when you focus solely on the best means of delivering the best outcomes, you can deliver significantly more for substantially less. They may not believe this is possible to do, but we do. It's not based on a fantasy but the reality of what others have done and are doing. There are many good things this council does, but too often you think you know best. In the words of former Leeds striker Erling Haaland, you need to stay humble and be more open to embracing what's working elsewhere. We've engaged with councils such as Sheffield, Sutton, Durham, Westminster, Westbarkshire, Camden, Greater London, Birmingham and others to look at significant savings they have made in areas such as procurement, AI, consultation, retraining and reskilling the workforce, waste management, outsourcing, removing unnecessary posts, IT and technology, reducing duplication and sharing services to name but a few. None of our amendments require the use of reserves. In fact, we believe that a responsible administration will be putting money into reserves this year and our amendments do exactly that. One of the clearest examples of how this council is wasting money while failing people is in how we care for our most vulnerable children. Right now, as the leader said, Leeds is spending an average of six and a half thousand pounds a week per child on external residential placements and frequently not delivering good outcomes. Sometimes it's much more than that. It's often said it would be cheaper to send them to Eton. A flippant remark? Maybe, but one with merit. Because while this council insists there is no alternative, there are, proven, tested and ignored. A study in Nottingham placed a hundred and twenty looked after children in boarding schools. The results? Their educational outcomes were four times better, the cost to the taxpayer was halved. This isn't theory, this is evidence. That's why I've been visiting boarding schools myself, speaking to school leaders and exploring how we can make this work for Leeds. The capacity is there, the appetite is there, and yet this council won't even consider it. And let's be clear, the people making money from the broken system aren't the children, they are the private providers profiting from public failure. Several councils across the country are already using boarding school placements. You can hear they're already dismissing the thoughts before I've even finished explaining They're not sending their kids there, despite the evidence being the outcomes are four times better, the cost is half. Several councils across the country are already using boarding school placements for some of their looked after children, including Nottingham, Oxfordshire, West Sussex, Kent, Buckinghamshire, Hampshire, Surrey, Essex, Cambridgeshire, Gloucestershire, North Yorkshire, Birmingham and Manchester. These councils have seen positive outcomes and cost savings demonstrating that this approach is both effective and economical. Councils of all colours, Labour councils, Liberal Democrat councils, Conservative councils, even Green councils have taken this approach in the country. Senior Labour figures such as Lord Adonis and that well renowned right wing foreign secretary David Lammy are also strong advocates of this approach. It clearly won't be right for every child, but it can and does work for some. We should be adding this to our approach. Innovative work by other councils around looked after children has also shown good results. For example, Hertfordshire's family safeguarding model, North Yorkshire's No Wrong Door initiative, Birmingham's multi-agency safeguarding hub and Manchester's Achieving Change Together approach have all been praised for reducing the number of children entering care and improving outcomes. While there are many good things being done in Leeds, as the leader outlined and I support them, there are always lessons to be learned and implemented from elsewhere. The current approach is hugely expensive and delivering poor outcomes for children and young people. We owe it to them and all the people of Leeds to do better. That's why, if I was council leader, I would set a clear deadline that within two years we would stop using expensive external residential placements in all but exceptional circumstances that meet the needs of the child. Instead, we would expand boarding school placements, learning from Nottingham's success. We'd also do much more to invest in fostering and adoption so children grow up in loving homes, not institutions. Better outcomes for vulnerable children, a better deal for taxpayers. That's our approach. With the money saved, we can then prioritise stopping children being looked after in the first place and keeping families together. Our amendments include provision for more mental health services for young people and increased funding for youth activities. In recent years, the mental health crisis among our youth has reached alarming levels. By investing in mental health services, we aim to provide the support that young people need to thrive and succeed. This includes funding for school based counselling, community mental health programmes and crisis intervention services. Additionally, we believe that providing positive outlets and activities for young people is crucial. Our amendments propose increased funding for youth centres, sports programmes, arts initiatives and after school activities. These programmes not only keep young people engaged and out of trouble but also help them to develop important life skills, build confidence and form lasting friendships. We would also put more money aside for those children and families with special educational needs that need post sixteen transport so the decisions are only ever made on what is best for the child. Lord Mayor, last year, you'll remember, the council sought to close the Multisystemic Therapy Child Abuse and Neglect Service, MSTCAN. Councillor Venna strongly argued against our amendment to reinstate and enhance it. Quietly during the year, they accepted grant funding which saved the service, and I'm glad they did. We were right to call them out then and we would still go further now and create an additional team supporting more families to stay together and saving the taxpayer money. One of the most scandalous decisions by this administration is to cease the Child Bereavement Service. This service provides crucial support to children and the wider family where there has been a bereavement. When it launched in twenty nineteen, former councillor, now Baroness Blake, said, "We're delighted to welcome Child Bereavement UK into Leeds to deliver this vital service for children and their families." The then executive member for children and families, councillor Fiona Venna, said, "I'm incredibly proud that we have developed a bereavement service especially for children and families so that they have access to timely and compassionate support that is flexible to their needs." One of my constituents who lost her daughter last year described the service as a lifeline. She said, "Without the Child Bereavement Service, I don't know how I would have coped." Today, the current executive member, councillor Hayden, has decided to cut the services of Child Bereavement UK. Cutting this service is not just a matter of budgeting, it's a matter of conscience. We would restore this service and ensure that no family has to face such a tragedy without support. I'd like to acknowledge the work of councillor Ryan Stevenson in continuing to highlight this really important issue in the council through scrutiny and other means. I've deliberately kept this amendment as a standalone item. Whatever your views on any other aspects of our amendments or the debate today, surely, surely for the sake of a hundred and thirty six thousand pounds, which will not materially alter anything in the budget, you can find it in your heart to vote to restore this vital service for grieving children in Leeds. Your constituents deserve that of you today. Lord Mayor, then there's the scandal of this council nearly cutting funding for neighbourhood networks, the very organisations that help older people stay independent. Let me tell you about Margaret, an eighty two year old woman who lives alone. The local neighbourhood network helps her get to medical appointments, provides social activities and checks in on her each week. This council almost took that away. What kind of a council are we when we target cuts at the elderly while wasting money elsewhere? I'm pleased that the council have retreated from its position, but the damage done to the relationship between the council and the networks is permanent and trust is broken. As is so often the case with this administration, it wasn't just what they wanted to do but the heavy handed way they went about it. I want to thank each and every one of our neighbourhood networks. They do an incredible job to support older people right across our city. They're incredibly cost effective and hugely reduce the pressure on the NHS and social care. We would expand funding for these vital services because keeping people independent isn't just the right thing to do, it saves money in the long run too. Another of our amendments is designed to help ease the pressure on the NHS, make the residential care sector more sustainable and achieve better outcomes for older people. It would work alongside our commitment to provide more funding for neighbourhood networks by supporting people to stay in their own homes for longer. At present, the council pays care homes six hundred and eighty four pounds a week for an older person's place. The cost of these placements to the providers is nine hundred pounds a week. And what the leader said was very disingenuous, they aren't giving enough money to cover the increasing costs, to pay the real living wage or the national insurance costs or anything else. The cost of the placement is nine hundred pounds a week, which means self funders have to subsidise heavily those who are reliant, excuse me, on the council taxpayer to foot the bill. The council has written to providers to say they will only increase the fees they pay between one point six percent and three and a half percent. The letter even acknowledges that this won't come close to covering the increased costs of national insurance and living wage rises imposed by the Labour government. Other comparable councils are increasing their fees by up to ten percent. I've met with senior representatives of the care home providers who have told me that given the increases to national insurance, the living wage and other costs, many will have to reduce the number of council funded beds they offer and some will likely leave the market altogether. This will add more pressure to council services and the NHS. They tell me this has become even more acute given the woefully inadequate fee offer from the council. At the same time, every night, there are two hundred and fifty people in beds in Leeds hospitals who are not there because of clinical need but because there isn't a care home bed for them to go to or enough support to enable them to go home. The cost of that is three thousand pounds a week for each person. It would cost five point six million pounds to increase the fee the council pays to care providers to nine hundred pounds a week, actually covering what it costs them. This would enable them to create more capacity, ensure they remain sustainable and have the spaces we need when we need them, whether that is for long term specialist or intermediate care. If we could reduce the numbers who are unnecessarily in hospital by even a modest fifty, it would save the NHS in Leeds seven point eight million pounds a year. A reduction of a hundred would save fifteen point six million pounds a year. Negotiating with the NHS to invest this money through us would save them significant amounts while ensuring better care for our elderly population. This approach would not only ease the pressure on the NHS but also provide better outcomes for those individuals and a better deal all round for the taxpayer. Why is it that for vulnerable children, we will pay whatever the private sector demands, yet for vulnerable adults, we won't even pay what the independent sector tells us it needs just to cover their costs? There are many examples of this administration making the wrong choices and approaching them in the wrong way. The way they have dealt with the Leeds bowling community has been appalling. There is no doubt that the way bowling in this city is funded and operated needs reviewing and updating. The bowling community themselves recognise this and have brought forward plans for how this could work. It just shows the poor attitude this Labour administration has for its residents, that it threatens to close half the city's bowling greens and threaten the viability of a sport that is a vital lifeline to many in our community. A proposal that is based on figures that simply don't stack up. I have met with bowling clubs from across the city who are understandably angry at the way this administration is treating them. Again, I don't recall the leaflets that said vote Labour to close your bowling green. We're offering a different approach, to work with the bowling community on the proposals that they themselves have brought forward to make bowling sustainable in its own right. We would invest in the infrastructure and value, the heritage and contribution that bowling makes to our city. The council's plan to introduce parking charges in parks and district centres is another attack on the people who keep our communities alive. I spoke to a cafe owner in Wetherby last week. She told me she's already struggling with rising costs and now she's terrified that new parking charges will drive customers away. "Why would they come here?", she said, "when they can park for free somewhere else?" The council should be supporting local businesses, not making life harder for them. Now, at times when I talk about it, I get accused of being sensational and what will a pound or two do? Well, I also last week met with the people who run Middleton Urban Bike Park where charges have already been introduced and they told me about the real effect of just a, just a pound. That's what this council sees as just a pound. Well, just that pound has driven dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of people away from going to that vital service where young people are going to get exercise, it's good for their mental health and we're charging their parents to drop them off. You have to think again on these things, for the minor, minor amount of money you would make, you are going to cost millions more to the people of Leeds. We should be encouraging people to visit our amazing parks and green spaces. Of course, when we have uninvited guests setting up camp in Of course, when we have uninvited guests setting up camp in our parks and car parks, do this administration send around the traffic wardens to collect the bill? Of course not. They deliver them portable toilets and clean up after them. We would scrap these plans and work with businesses to grow our local economy, not suffocate it. Lord Mayor, our amendments include provision for an additional PCSO for every ward and additional civil enforcement officers too. This will help keep our streets safe and ensure that our communities are well protected. We would also lobby the West Yorkshire mayor to cut the bureaucracy of tying up proceeds of crime funding and let local councillors decide the community's safety priorities in their own areas. By giving local members access to more civil enforcement officers, they can direct these resources to the priorities in their communities, whether it's parking problems, dog fowling or fly tipping. Now, let's talk about getting the basics right. Because frankly, to paraphrase another Tetley-themed phrase, "It seems like the current council couldn't organise a bin collection in a car park." Seriously, folks, you couldn't make this stuff up. Picture this: the wilderness car park in Wetherby. Sounds idyllic, right? Well, it's a bit of a wilderness in terms of bin collection. You've got bins belonging to the town council, some managed by Parks and Countryside and some by Environmental Services. You'd think that with so many bins, they'd always be empty, but no. One bin is overflowing, but the operative can't touch it because it's under another department's jurisdiction. Meanwhile, their own bin is completely empty. It's like a scene from a comedy sketch. But wait, there's more. The same goes for hedges and trees. You've got Parks and Countryside, Environmental Services, forestry, highways, housing, parish councils and even private owners all responsible for different bits of the same hedge row. One branch falls and it's a game of who's going to pick it up. And don't get me started on the grit bins. They're like a bureaucratic treasure hunt. Ah, this one's under housing, that one's under highways and oh, that one's under Parks and Countryside. It's like a never-ending episode of Who's Bin Is It Anyway? Our approach would put an end to this madness. As tempting as it is to be drawn into a campaign for a dose, a department for council efficiency, we'd prefer to leave it to local members to commission the services that best suit their area. We would also double members' mice funds, frozen for 15 years, to help them support more local projects. It could be working with local parish councillors, private contractors or using the council, whoever is most cost-effective and delivers the best outcome. Local members frequently get the blame for the council's failure to deliver, so let's put them in local control. Together with our plans to entrust millions more of resource to community committees, I am certain that members across this chamber could deliver far better outcomes for their communities at a fraction of the cost. I'm certain they could do it better. After all, how hard can it be to empty a bin? And while we're on the subject of bins, let's address the state of the refuse service. For many of us, it's a rubbish service in every sense of the word. And let me be clear, this is not an attack on the hard-working bin crews but is very much an attack on the woeful Labour leadership. We now know that they don't actually have any idea how many bins they empty on a given day. A missed bin is only counted in the official figures if it's reported by a resident. It would need every resident in a street to report the miss for the whole street to be counted. Except, once one resident's reported it, if a second one for the same street reports, a message comes up to say, "This has already been reported." So, a whole street missed, everybody reports it, it counts as one missed bin in the official figures. A report by an elected member of a missed bin or a street bin is not counted in the official figures. Even the end-of-day report, which tells the council which streets they've missed, is not included in the official figures they present us at the end of the year when they say 98.5% or however many made-up numbers they've given us this year have been emptied. Our amendment would start recording properly and give additional investment to support the crews to deliver the cold-plated service our residents should expect. Right now, this council is like a bad sitcom where nobody knows what's going on and yet we keep tuning in hoping it gets better, but it never does. With our plan, we'll turn this comedy of errors into a well-oiled machine. If we made the council work more efficiently, they certainly wouldn't need you to charge in our car parks and green spaces. Efficiency isn't just about saving money, it's about making life easier and better for everyone. Let's ditch the absurdity and get back to common sense. Another area that needs common sense is highway maintenance. Twenty-some years ago, Keith Wakefield, as leader of the council, said that when it came to road repairs, that Labour in Leeds had other priorities. Nothing has changed, and that is why the backlog of repairs is still 19.5 years. We would ditch the vanity schemes, the cycle of superhighways and inaccessible city centre projects and reprioritise the money on reducing the backlog and fixing the potholes. We need to apply this approach to how we treat our council house tenants too. We are committed to ensuring that urgent repairs are dealt with on time, the first time. Our plan for a tenants' charter guarantees this commitment. It's time to take action and ensure that our tenants receive the service they deserve. Having robbed many of them of their winter fuel payments, this would be the very least the Labour councillors could do. We would also help vulnerable sheltered housing tenants by reversing the increases to their rent and charges and we would pay for this by maximising the revenue generated from the council's estate of void garages. And for those tenants who dream of owning their own home one day, the cornerstone of any growing economy, our rent-to-buy proposal would lift the heavy hand of the state from the necks of hard-working people and reignite the aspiration of homeownership. There are societal benefits of doing this too. A recent study by the Independent Research Network, SESFO, found that right-to-buy policies lead to better exam results, higher university attendance and increased earnings for children growing up in ex-council homes, and they want to stop it. The people of Leeds deserve better. They deserve a council that is efficient, productive and truly serves their needs. They deserve a council that embraces innovation and works tirelessly to improve the quality of life for every resident. In moving these Conservative group amendments, we have laid out a clear and ambitious plan focused on fiscal responsibility, community investment, economic growth and environmental sustainability. We have shown how we can deliver better outcomes for our children, support for our elderly, keep our streets safe and clean and provide essential services that our residents rely on. Putting power and resources in the hands of local members and trusting them to deliver for their communities. But this is not just about numbers and policies, this is about the heart and soul of our city. It's about harnessing the indomitable spirit of Leeds, the spirit of resilience, innovation and determination that has defined us for 400 years. It's about coming together, putting aside our differences and working towards a common goal. We stand at a crossroads and the choice is clear. We can continue down the path of decline or we can choose a future that is brighter, bolder and better. A future where every resident has the opportunity to thrive, where our communities are strong and vibrant and where our council is a model of efficiency and effectiveness. Let us rise to the challenge and seize this moment. Let us embrace the spirit of Joshua Tetley and build a city that we can all be proud of. Together, we can make Leeds the envy of the nation, a city that leads by example and stands as a beacon of hope and progress. Lord Mayor, I move the amendments.
Thank you councillor Lamb. I will now call on councillor Flint to second amendments one to nine.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I second the Conservative amendments and reserve the right to speak.
Okay, councillor Galton to move amendments 10 to 27.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, please let me offer my sincere gratitude to Victoria Bradshaw and her team for their diligence in fulfilling their role to support the Liberal Democrat group in producing our budget amendments. I have to say that sometimes certain officers give you the impression that they feel that democracy and councillors as democratic representatives actually get in the way of professionals delivering public services people need. That is something that I have never felt when discussing budget proposals with finance officers. They have the unenviable task of accumulating, number crunching and reporting on the many varied operations that exist within the Leeds City Council machine. Discussing budget amendments with a wide variety of political perspectives and experience offers exposure to lived experience insight into council services that may only have previously been understood from an internal officer perspective. The creativity of that process offers an opportunity to reimagine service delivery and propose alternative priorities with our limited resources. Which brings us to the politics. Lord Mayor, a lot of party members from whichever political grouping think that politics is about winning the argument. For those that are happy with opposition, then that isn't a problem. For those that want to put their ideas into action, they need to win elections and compromises are made to achieve this. Once in power, your decisions are about choices. And if they're contrary to the things that you got elected on, you better find a good excuse or somebody else to blame. The coalition had Liam Byrne's note: "Sorry, there's no money left." The Tories blamed Europe, then Covid, then the war in Ukraine, then each reincarnation of leader, but never Brexit. Throughout those 15 years, for every poor, ill-thought-out decision, or worse, non-decision, that this Labour council has made, their excuse has unfailingly been that those decisions were forced on them by the ideological savage cuts of the Westminster regime. Well, now we have a perfect alignment of Labour governance in Leeds. We have councillor Cooper in charge of the city's financial strategy, Mayor Tracy Brabham setting budgets for our buses and police and our own Leeds MP Rachel Reeves in charge of the British economy. Now that all those ideological economic illiterates are out of the way and no one's arguing about Truss and Quateng, are we, anymore? Surely the members on the Labour benches should be on cloud nine and it must feel like Christmas 365 days of the year. Or is there instead the heavy thump of crashing expectations as all three levels of Labour administration simultaneously deliver cancelled new hospitals, rob pensioners of their fuel payments, make bus travel a miserable lottery, our streets antisocial scruffy environments and elderly bowling club members, the next group of Leeds citizens singled out for being too expensive for the council to bother about? Is there that awful realisation that there is no one else to blame after the £20 billion black hole ironically rang hollow? Well, the good news is that the Liberal Democrat group are offering Labour members and other groups the most extensive, no, not expensive, extensive menu of options that correct some of those wrong choices made by this administration and suggest some alternatives that together will make Leeds a more positive, inclusive city. Lord Mayor, to give members even more confidence to follow their consciences and vote for our amendments, I will remind colleagues that in the words of the council's chief finance officer, and I quote: "The budget motion in the name of councillor Stuart Galton will not materially impact on the overall robustness of the council's budget for 2025/26 or the adequacy of its general fund reserves." Lord Mayor, Leeds Liberal Democrats believe that investment in a good start in childhood reaps dividends in the future. And this led to the introduction of pupil premium when we were in government. However, the ability for this council to maximise investment in children across the city has been severely impacted by its reliance on expensive private care providers to care for children looked after. The recent adoption of previous Lib Dem budget amendments to provide more in-house residential accommodation is slowly having an impact on care placement costs. But there is still an untapped opportunity to make a similar impact in recruitment and retention of in-house foster carers through the creation of a John Lewis-style employee-owned fostering agency. Our amendment repeats the call for this to be pursued. Lord Mayor, Liberal Democrat amendments to introduce glass recycling collections were dismissed year on year by Labour as too expensive to implement. Now introduced, the collections save the council £1 million a year and should finally see this council's recycling performance pick up after scraping the bottom for most of this Labour administration's tenure. Now, the Labour administration has arrogantly overlooked the decade-long Rothwell food pilot and is pursuing a dangerous gamble that the government will give them an exemption from compulsory weekly collection of food waste by combining it with the brown-wit bin waste. This is not responsible governments. And our amendment seeks to put the council back on the right path and playing our part in the government's growth agenda by converting our food waste into tradable power and compost rather than contracting an outsider to dispose of it. Lord Mayor, for too long Leeds has felt like a two-speed city and the lion's share of investment and resources dedicated to Leeds city centre in the belief that this fattened goose would lay golden eggs that everywhere else in Leeds would benefit from. Instead, our outlying communities feel neglected, overlooked, undervalued and asset-stripped. A series of budget amendments from the Liberal Democrats seeks to rebalance that unfairness felt across our neighbourhoods. Despite the promise of more officers from both the Conservatives in government and the mayor's office here in West Yorkshire, neighbourhood policing teams are at their lowest level for years. Our proposed 33 extra PCSOs will make a real difference to antisocial behaviour on our streets in every ward across the city. Similarly, our 33 extra traffic enforcement officers will not only pay for themselves in the penalties that they will generate, but they will also enable the council to stop the bizarre practice of keeping four out of five staff permanently in the city centre instead of monitoring local schools and double yellow lines out in our communities. Keeping our roads and footpaths free of irresponsible parking is essential to encourage the most affordable, active travel option of all, walking, and for ensuring that disabled people are not excluded from accessing their neighbourhoods. Lord Mayor, pavement parking is currently only enforceable by the police through the criminal offence of obstruction. Our amendment calls for a study to create a parking strategy in the city to look at the possibility of taking on pavement parking enforcement powers and simultaneously creating better parking provision in streets not designed for the level of car usage that we have in modern times. It also recognises the under-provision of electric charging infrastructure on terraced streets and that all these problems should be recognised officially in 15-minute neighbourhood plans for every ward. Lord Mayor, Nottingham's city centre business parking levy raises £9 million annually. And our proposal to introduce a similar scheme in Leeds, given that it has received the lion's share of public transport investment in the city, would help start making real progress in carrying out public transport and active travel improvements included in those 15-minute ward plans. One thing that 15-minute neighbourhood plans will demonstrate is that for many of our town centres, the only option for accessing our high streets for many households is by car. To keep our high streets thriving, our amendment cancels the introduction of charging to five town centres and cancels the current charging operation in Ottley. Similarly, our parks and green spaces need to be as accessible as possible so that everybody is enabled to enjoy the natural health service that they offer. Our £500,000 Park Safety Fund seeks to make reality some of the recommendation of the West Yorkshire mayor's study on improving safety in parks for women and girls and thereby improving safety for everybody by introducing measures such as lighting for those areas that want it. Similarly, our £2.4 million fund aims to ensure that disabled people are not excluded from local parks through poor infrastructure. Our amendment to safeguard the future maintenance of bowling greens in city parks is also intended to demonstrate that there should be no discrimination to imply that activities popular with older people are somehow subsidised by the council whilst football pitches and playgrounds are never addressed in such terms. The farce of local councillors being charged £1,200 for a six-foot Christmas tree and the failure of the Trees for Streets project announced yesterday are clear demonstrations that the city's forestry management is dysfunctional and in need... that the city's forestry management is dysfunctional and in need of urgent investment in both resource and strategy. Our amendment will respond to this need as well as the huge backlog in tree maintenance across the city. Lord Mayor, keeping on the theme of unacceptable levels of maintenance, I will turn to our amendments concerning our responsibilities as a housing provider. Contrary to what this administration broadcasts, its new council house delivery programme has been a failure. It has been too rigid in its delivery model and has not delivered its three hundred homes a year target, and often produces housing at a greater cost than the market value. Furthermore, outlying communities such as Rothwell have seen sites earmarked and cleared for new council housing but then left vacant for years. Our amendment seeks to break the council's doctrine air approach to procuring new council homes by starting a programme of buying homes in the open housing market in areas of highest scarcity with forty new homes acquired in the first year. The vast majority of our council housing estates were built as bespoke communities, and some are effectively heritage buildings. Their surrounding environment was just as integral to their design as the homes themselves. Over time, Lord Mayor, that relationship has been forgotten as properties have been improved whilst their street fabric and green spaces deteriorate. This is particularly apparent in our sheltered housing schemes where residents rely more on others, more than others, sorry, on council-provided maintenance. Our amendment seeks to bring back the powers of intervention that were historically held in estate management and for estate management plans to be co-produced, resourced, and delivered with residents to bring back pride to these neighbourhoods. Lord Mayor, Liberal Democrats don't get ideological about much, but one thing that we truly believe in is the power that resides in our communities and the potential for the council to achieve better results when we allow communities to have a bigger say in how services are delivered and resources are shared within those communities. That is why we are so disappointed in the council's counterintuitive proposals to reduce the number of community committees in the city, reduce the number of officers supporting locality working, and to reduce year on year the wellbeing funds for local investment available to those community committees. All this has been done in parallel to an internal community committee review that says it wants to work more with local people, but whose only suggested improvement so far are to create more complicated paperwork and procedures for those people to navigate. Our amendments will reverse those cuts, as well as the wellbeing fund cuts for the previous year. More importantly, our proposed citywide community devolution commission will challenge decision-makers across the council, health, education, police, and transport to demonstrate how they will work differently with local residents and the third sector to make local services accountable and bespoke to local communities. Finally, Lord Mayor, we can't have a budget debate without a proposal around potholes. Our amendment, in pursuit of something we can all support, also proposes the purchase of a J C B pothole pro, whose efficiency for filling potholes is legendary, which with your help will make a grand tour of the city demonstrating its prowess in the hope of garnering popular support for an entire fleet next year. Lord Mayor, I thank you and present the amendments.
Thank you, councillor Galton. I will now call on councillor Downs to second amendments of ten to twenty-seven.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Oh, well, never mind. Quite, quite simply, I'll second Lord Mayor and reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
Not sure what's going on there, but hey, okay. I will now call on councillor Stables to move amendments twenty-eight to thirty-six, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor and fellow members. Firstly, a big thank you to Richard Ellis for all his help and support in putting together the, the Green Group amendments. Whilst we know and understand the very challenging financial position that this council is in currently through a combination of factors, fourteen years of Tory governments reducing funding to local authorities up and down the country, an ageing population driving up the need for adult social care, the cost of living crisis which has had such an impact on those individuals and families struggling to make ends meet, causing discord and driving up the need for looked-after children. There are things that can be done over and above and differently than those proposed in the Labour budget. We've looked at ways to both save significant amounts of money and how to improve the lives of all those who have chosen Leeds as their home. Yes, we have to focus on ensuring we deliver all our statutory duties, but over and above that, we want to expand, not shrink, opportunities for everyone to thrive, not just survive. Unlike the Tories, we won't be looking to outsource to all our services. We don't want to end up like the Tory-led Northamptonshire council that became bankrupt in two thousand, twenty eighteen after outsourcing its services, trying to drastically shrink its size and run the council like a business, spending over fifty million pounds on consultants and rebranding. The expected efficiency savings didn't materialise. There are savings to be made by reducing the scale of the special responsibilities allowance for members on, on salaries of P O six or above, but our biggest saving proposal is to look at reducing our contribution to the West Yorkshire Pension Fund by one per cent, which would weigh, which would save three million pounds. This is a proposal that has been suggested by a senior actuary in Leeds, in fact several, following discussions in several financial institutions about the size of local authority pension pots across the country. This is no pie-in-the-sky scheme. It's been carefully considered by those with far more financial acumen than most of us here, and the conclusion reached was that the West Yorkshire Pension Pot is oversized to meet its demands going forward, and it would therefore be prudent to reduce contributions this year, particularly given the overwhelming financial need by local authorities right now and in the coming years. We ask that this is seriously considered and discussed with Bradford City Council, who run the pension fund. One of the biggest areas of concern is the growth of the number of looked-after children in Leeds, which we know has been exacerbated by the cost of living crisis, putting additional pressures on relationships and family units. So we propose to fund an additional eight family support workers to help work with families and reverse this situation, so, so that we're able to keep more families together where they belong, as well as reducing the impact on the council's financial position. In terms of increasing revenue for the council, we're proposing a number of feasibility studies, some of which we have seen in our amendments previously, such as a late-night levy for the city centre. This has been implemented in a number of cities across the UK, including Nottingham, Liverpool, Newcastle, Bos, Bolton, and Islington, where a levy is charged on licensed businesses who serve alcohol between generally midnight and six a.m., bringing in much-needed additional revenue. We've also suggested a feasibility study to look at renting out council car parks to private businesses outside office hours, and to look at the commercial viability of introducing collect lockers into community hubs, libraries, and leisure centres, again, which could deliver additional revenue. So how should we use these savings, Mayor? Firstly, we need to be ensuring that the most vulnerable in our society have the support they need, which includes looking out for those with protected characteristics. We decided as a council to include care leavers in this category last year, and following the deputation they made to full council, where they talked about how difficult life is when they have to sat out on their own aged eighteen and set up home. Unlike most of us, they don't have parents to look out for them, coach and guide them at this challenging time of life, trying to find work, which can be more difficult due to discrimination, whilst learning how to budget and make ends meet. That is why we're proposing a feasibility study to look at withholding council tax for all care leavers until they are twenty-five to help support them for this time. We also recognise the difficulties that many disabled people in wheelchairs and mobility scooters, plus adults with children in pushchairs or just holding a young child's hand, are experiencing every day on the streets in certain parts of Leeds due to inconsiderate selfish parking across pavements, forcing these vulnerable people into roads and endangering their lives. So similarly to the Lib Dems, we've been looking at this. That's why we're proposing that a new traffic regulation order is created that makes obstructive pavement parking an offence that can be enforced by civil enforcement officers, because we all know the police simply don't have the capacity to address this issue. This would initially be a trial in a particular selected locations with an additional five civil enforcement officers for a three-month period, which we self-funding through income from parking fines. On the same theme, we propose to reverse the decision to introduce parking charges to Wetherby, as this will disproportionately impact those on low incomes unable to get to Wetherby by public transport, and similarly reverse the parking charges introduced already across parks, because again, this impacts those least able to afford it. And parks are so important to the people of Leeds. They allow those who live in inner-city areas, in flats, in the centre of housing estates, who don't see green space and trees on a day-to-day basis, to gain the benefits of being in nature, which we all know not only helps people physically through exercise, but also helps enormously with their mental health. I go back to my point earlier that the council should not just be about enabling people to survive, but should be helping our residents to thrive. So in a similar vein, we also propose to permanently reverse the review of bowling green provision, and I think most of the opposition parties have proposed this. These are places of escape, places to socialise, and are an important part of many residents' lives. As well as pavement, pavement parking, another issue that comes up again and again that impacts residents' lives is fly tipping, so we've made provision for an additional environmental enforcement officer, which should be self-funding through the fines that are brought in. We've also made provision for an additional planning enforcement officer, as this is an area that seems to be under-resourced and unable to keep on top of the number of issues presented, which can cause a great deal of stress for those residents affected. As Green councillors, you'll not be surprised to hear that we're delighted that a third reuse shop has been created and is doing so well. So why stop there? We suggest we should continue the rollout with a fourth to enable more people in Leeds to buy pre-loved items and reduce the amount of waste across the city, so we've included injection into the capital programme for this provision. We've also recognised the impact that collapsed gullies have across the city, and we've included in the capital programme a million pound for additional works. Finally, we're delighted that the decision has been made to enable the Abbey House Museum to stay open, but we do recognise the difficult financial position faced across our museums and galleries, so we suggest that a museums development trust is set up along the lines of that in Bristol, which has been very successful with an income of over two hundred and seventy thousand pounds in twenty twenty-three, that would enable the people of Leeds to actively support this sector and enable its long-term viability. In terms of the other party amendments, there are lots of good suggestions from the Conservatives, but they seem to believe in the magic money tree, as we have zero confidence that they can achieve these enormous savings proposed through efficiencies, greater use of technology and A I, and outsourcing to create a leaner and more productive organisation. In fact, the interim assistant chief executive, finance traded, traded and resources, would wish the members of the council to be aware that since it is currently unclear how and where these savings will be realised, expenditure funded from this store should not be incurred until the proposed level of savings is being realised or has been clearly, or has been clearly identified. So although we would love to support many of these initiatives and indeed have some of them in our own amendments, we won't be voting for them as we are not confident that the resources have been identified to fund them. On the Lib Dem amendments, we're delighted to support councillor Galton's amendment two point one three for a feasibility study into the introduction of a city centre workplace parking levy in Leeds, which we proposed last year, as well as two point one five proposing the acquisition of a J C B pothole, pothole pro to repair potholes. We will be voting for this, as it's a great idea, but we'd like to see an alternative supplier of this product sort, as J C B do have, do not have a good ethics record and have been involved in human rights breaches in the occupied Palestinian territories. On the M B I amendments, we noted that councillor Newton in amendment seven point six has called for a feasibility study to look at a community hub post office. Enheadingly, the post offices, post office is in a community hub with a library too, and this seems to be very successful. Perhaps we should look at this opportunity across the city and also consider using community hubs for banking hub locations as the bank branches slowly close. So to finish, I'd like to commend the Green Group budget amendments to the council, and we hope you can support them as we look to help the residents of Leeds not just survive, but to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stables. I will now call on councillor Blackburn to second amendments twenty-eight to thirty-six.
I second and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor.
That's fine. Councillor Dobson to move amendments thirty-seven to forty-three, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Garforth and Tullington Independent would like to open in the traditional way by thanking the finance team for their hard work and dedication during the last twelve months and for the advice and information they have offered in helping us frame both our thoughts and our budget amendments. We would also like to thank officers across all departments working in an increasingly difficult environment. We are also fortunate to have many, many council workers, often working in difficult conditions, serving our communities week in, week out, and we also thank them for their dedication. And also this year, just something a little bit different, a special shout-out to the team who support the three of us and many of the other smaller groups on the third floor without whom we would sink in terms of our caseload, so thank them very much indeed for their hard work. Lord Mayor, Nostradamus was a sixteenth-century French astrologer and apothecary famed for predictions. I took the liberty of looking back over last year's Garforth and, Garforth and Tullington Independent's budget speech, and it's clear that our group could have given him a good run for his money. That said, we don't think you needed the gift of a Nostradamus to predict exactly what a change of government would bring, or, to be more accurate, in terms of Leeds, what they have singularly, spectacularly, and deliberately failed to deliver. Our party predicted that the new incoming government would not improve a lot of local government, and there would be no magic money tree with any solutions to the ongoing crisis that faces local government. Not only has that proved to be the case, but even for those of us that expected it, the frightening and accelerated pace by which this has happened has left even the most cynical observer staggered, shocked, and surprised by the fiscal decisions of the Chancellor and the negative impact this has had on Leeds. I think many of us present would have more respect for the new government had they simply stood up on a general election platform of being a good old-fashioned tax-and-spend Labour government. Instead, to talk about growth, generating jobs, stimulating the economy, whilst in parallel applying a series of fiscal measures that will do the exact opposite was and is disingenuous in the extreme, and yet the excuses are already being wheeled out. Council, the world's finest telescope and the world's finest brains using the Event Horizon Telescope could not find a twenty-two billion pound black hole, and there's a simple reason for that, it doesn't exist. The O B R cannot confirm its existence. The well-regarded I F S reported that if such a figure did exist, then it must have been ignored by Labour. In their manifesto and their pre-election commitments, the claim being that the incoming Chancellor must have known the size of the challenges to the public sector finances and the shortfalls that would need to be addressed once in office. Simply put, what would be paid for and what would be left by the wayside, but they chose not to say, that is not a black hole. Like any budget from a household budget upwards, you only have so much money and then you must make a series of decisions as to how you wish to spend that money. If you do not have enough money to satisfy all your ambitions, once your key priorities are met, you have to cut your cloth accordingly. That is a fiscal management decision that is making choices. Again, it's not a black hole. Let's turn our attention to a moment- Let's turn our attention to a moment to the spending priorities that could immediately have addressed the supposed black hole, that could actually leave the government with an extra fifteen point four billion available to alleviate the huge pressures on local authorities and supporting adults and young people safely and effectively without the default position of a council tax hike. And I'm going to park the eighteen billion for Mauritius, but focus on the thirty-seven point four billion committed to achieving net zero by twenty twenty-nine. Currently, the United Kingdom emits less than one percent of world emissions. Many of us, over many years on this council, have pushed extensively and successfully for environmental improvements, including improvements to recycling, to creating a cleaner city which is healthier for all to live in. And nobody would argue that is a worthy and achievable aspiration for the country, as was moving away from fossil fuels to more appropriate technologies. But that ambition could be achieved more organically over time through incremental change and not throwing a massive amount of money at a problem in the short term, which has created, if not a black hole, enormous fiscal pressures upon the public purse. To dive in headfirst trying to achieve net zero in four years of a parliament, whilst committing such an eye-watering sum of money to the problem is foolhardy when set against both the world backdrop, our internal economic backdrop, and also our growing social care crisis, which is so evident here in Leeds. Our greatest efforts would be a drop in the ocean in terms of carbon reduction whilst costing a huge amount of money, creating a massive strain on public purse at a time when the government are telling us that money's tight, where the winter fuel allowance for pensioners is unaffordable, and our previous commitment to the Wasby Women has been dropped, to name but two. Until last month, this council supported the Leeds Wasby Women unequivocally, until of course, that famous twenty-two billion black hole was brought into play as a reason why this particular group of women could no longer be fully supported. Let me read for council some testimony from one local woman here in Leeds affected by this. There are no words to describe this ultimate betrayal by this government. I am one of the individuals who should have received my pension five years ago. Based on the comments of many Labour politicians in recent years, many now ministers who supported the proposition of all the relevant individuals receiving compensation for this gross injustice, I am intrigued to learn why the Labour government deemed it necessary to award the rail workers a massive pay increase costing the nation more than ten billion within days of the twenty twenty-four election. But we are not worthy of compensation despite the parliamentary and health services ombudsmen findings. I do not anticipate Rachel Reeves, who is my MP, or any other Labour politician can offer a rationale. Under the short but eventful Liz Truss administration, it was proved you cannot borrow your way to growth. The government, but then in opposition, made hair with this and continued to do so right up to the general election, claiming justifiably that the previous administration had nearly crashed the economy. So why the sudden change in language to explain the exact same political strategies? Why last month did the Chief Secretary to the Treasury say that the current cost of borrowing was normal and in line with international trends when the selfsame issues under the previous government were described by Labour as crashing the economy? Even in giving that statement to the Commons, the Chief Secretary again used the crashing the economy line, wagging his finger in the process, whilst trying to create a firewall around Leeds MP Rachel Reeves and her disastrous stewardship of the economy. Oh, and for good measure, he threw the twenty-two billion black hole back into the equation. Last month, the pound fell to its lowest level for nine months after the UK government borrowing costs continued to rise. That drop came as UK borrowing costs surged to a twenty-seven-year high. Economists have warned that the rising costs could lead to further tax rises or cuts to spending plans as the government tries to meet its own self-imposed borrowing targets. City analysts are now claiming that the crisis is far deeper and far darker than the impact of the Liz Truss mini-budget. The most important thing for any economy to thrive and grow is confidence, both nationally and internationally. But clearly, the markets have no confidence in the current direction of travel under Rachel Reeves. Council, this is exactly the same state of affairs that brought about the potential crash to the economy under Liz Truss. It's just been done in slow motion. Yet this time round, Labour appear to consider themselves blameless for terrifying the markets. We are sure that everybody within this chamber would agree that everyone working within the public sector and the private sector deserves a decent standard of living and a decent pay packet at the end of the month. But it has to be paid for, and it is the job of any responsible government to create the correct economic environment to be able to afford what goes into pay packets. However, to simply enter office and to agree to inflation-busting public sector pay settlements and commit increases from April to the national living wage and the national minimum wage rings two alarm bells. Firstly, if it's paid for through borrowing, it will be inflationary. If it's paid for through taxation, it will reduce people's overall standard of living, pay rises or not. What will not pay for it is growth, because the economy has not grown since the change of government, despite the rhetoric and despite the promises. As inflation continues to rise, it is currently up to three percent. The government, therefore, has very little option in terms of funding these or any future pay settlements other than through taxation. The imaginary growth isn't going to pay for anything. Taxation comes in many forms, but usually these days by stealth. As our group have said before, national insurance is now nothing more and nothing less than a straightforward tax. And the national insurance rise from April for employers will have a huge detrimental impact on growth, employers' ability to hire and retain personnel, and will impact upon us right here in Leeds within the council. Government estimates that Leeds will receive seven point one percent to offset national insurance against our estimated national insurance rise of ten point five million would result in a three point four million net loss in funding. That's hardly what we were promised in this chamber when we have had to endure endless calls for a Labour government, is it? Of course, that isn't the only area where Leeds is missing out: the L G I. Leeds Teaching Hospital trust and of course, the patients and people of Leeds have received the devastating news with the government recently came to the announcement that they would renege on this important project by kicking it into the long grass until at least the next Parliament twenty thirty, at the very earliest. It's an outrageous breach of public trust that was placed in the government only last July. It's our belief that this government know they won't be empowered by then, so have simply kicked the can down the road to become somebody else's problem. They claim to back building and development to generate employment and stimulate the economy. This would have been a perfect example of a project that could have begun to do that right now and to achieve those aims and aspirations. Except, of course, none of the rhetoric was true, and Leeds, as always, will miss out. The fact that two Leeds-based MPs, including the Chancellor, sit at the Cabinet table make this particular betrayal all the harder to stomach. MPs should be proud to represent Leeds and our great city. And our great city should be more than a safety or a political stepping stone. In the run-up to the general election, time without number, Sir Keir Starmer claimed there would be a freeze on council tax. It almost became a mantra, another false promise. The less generous amongst us might even call it a lie. Here in Leeds, long-suffering residents will again be hit by an inflation-busting five percent, whilst Angela Rayner has given dispensation for Bradford to charge seven point five, and in Birmingham, ten percent. How has this unsustainable situation come about? Well, in twenty-ten, George Osborne, in conjunction with Liberal Danny Alexander, thought it was a tremendous wheeze to push care costs onto local authorities, whilst at the same time reducing the Revenue Support Grant and placing the expectation on local authorities through increasing council tax. To Leeds' credit, this was resisted for many years under the stewardship of Keith Wakefield, and it was only when he stood down to be replaced by a less fiscally prudent leader that the five percent uplift had been applied year on year on year ad infinitum. Keith wasn't a faultless leader, who is? But he did insist his cabinet had to work to find savings, and it would not be incumbent upon the council-tax-paying public of Leeds to find the money. The new government have not been the cavalry charging over the horizon that the Labour administration here in Leeds expected and indeed called for every single council. However, here in Leeds, we have not done ourselves any favours. The endless push towards privatisation of the care sector has left the city desperately exposed because of the impending pay rises from April, along with the national insurance rises for employers. Simply put, the private sector will be on its knees in terms of delivering affordable and safe social care provision, which will have a number of knock-on effects for Leeds. Care provision will inevitably worsen, standards will drop, and there will be an extra unfunded burden upon local authorities to find the difference. Worst-case scenario, private sector provision will fold under the weight of wage demands, inflation and national insurance, and the council will be expected to pick up the pieces in terms of care that who have, over the last decade, jettisoned much local in-house provision. Between this council's reckless policy for the last eight years and the policies of the new government, you have created the perfect storm. The proposed eighty-six thousand pounds cap on social care that West Streeting promised, pre-election of course, Labour would honour, has now been scrapped with a further three-year wait for any tangible proposals. Government after government of all persuasions have not known what to do regarding long-term care provision for an aging population. But to place the burden on local government, again through taxation, is simply unacceptable and unsustainable to this council. And the Labour administration here in Leeds should be sending a very, very clear message to your MPs. What are you going to do when there's nothing left to cut, but you've still got to raise the five percent? If this administration does not approach the budget-setting process more seriously going forward and apply that red pen more vigorously, then you're going to run out of road. And it's only a matter of time. Every year at budget time, opposition groups will talk about choices and point to the profligacy of the administration in terms of large-scale infrastructure projects from empty cycle lanes to creating Europe's largest maze in the city centre. But it is often the smaller and more sustained waste that goes under everybody's radar, apparently, that highlights the fact we are still hemorrhaging money without proper thought or proper due diligence to how it is spent. Last November, a Leeds woman was sent to jail for defrauding H M R C to the tune of nearly half a million pounds, along with another individual. In twenty-seventeen, she left a local guy group, and a change dot org petition was started for her reinstatement. Alarm bells should have rung then. An internal audit requested by my group has recently shown the group she went to set up, the tribe, has received council money of nearly fifty-six thousand pounds between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-four. Part of that audit concludes that there is insufficient evidence held to provide assurances that all the funding awarded by council had been used for the purpose for which it was provided. Worse still, when I personally raised this matter of this individual with some very senior council officers some years ago, I was told, move on, nothing to see. In fact, the council continued to shower money and awards upon this group. Well, clearly, there was something to see. But rather than just say, we told you so, the question we all have to consider is, what do we do about her? If we are serious about protecting public money and framing robust budgets, we need to ensure this sort of thing can never happen again. At this stage, our group probably owes council an apology. You will have all received a quite incomprehensible guideline around changes to ice. It's our understanding this came about as a result of our interventions on this matter. But it seems to us this is a little bit like when you're at school and one naughty kid plays up and everybody gets detention. Rather than try hang this round the neck of ninety-nine members, most of whom know exactly what they are doing when it comes to supporting local groups financially, we would rather officers have the confidence to tackle individual members who would throw a small fortune at a small group working in one specific area and challenge them when they are spending money like drunken sailors on shore leave. That said, it's not all bad news. I'd like to offer our group's thanks to councillor Michael Miller, who's recently taken over as our community committee chair, and the way we're now looking at our finances and our financial arrangements collegiately, sensibly, is a breath of fresh air. So I'd like to thank him for that approach. It's disappointing that community committees are going to be truncated. Lord Mayor, credit where due, credit where due. However, talking of throwing good money after bad, thank you councillor Lamb for the update on Leeds twenty twenty-three. Although I have got a bit of a bone to pick with councillor Lamb. I was enraged during your speech when, it was the only time, I think, in the last eighteen years I've actually wanted to leap up for a point of order. Because Erling Haaland hasn't ever played for Leeds. It was Alfie Inger-Haaland, his father. But...
Outrageous.
I don't want any serious sanctions against you, Alan, but I think anybody who follows Leeds and will be delighted when we are returned to the Premier League next season would love to take Haaland Junior as our number nine. I can imagine Mana Solomon on the left and Dan James on the right firing crosses in all day. But nevertheless, too many left-wingers in this... We've enough left-wingers in this council. But anyway, talking of Leeds twenty twenty-three, it's the gift that keeps on taking, isn't it? Executive board were promised faithfully that this would not happen, and the bridging loan arrangement to cover the H M R C VAT liabilities would be repaid to this authority. Who gave those assurances and will there be any sanctions at all for such a catastrophic failure of judgment, either at officer or political level? My group never tire of reminding council that we were the only group to initially call this out for the monumental waste of time and money that it was. But even we, you were a bit late to the party, but that's fine. But we never envisaged that two years after the event, we would still be paying such a heavy price for what we call Blake's folly. If we can quickly spend that much money without a buy or leave, why can't we pay our foster carers their annual uplift on time rather than a year later, as been the case in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five? These examples of profit-cut spending blows the credibility of this council clean out of the water. When you want to cut services and provision for people who want to enjoy bowling, park at a local beauty spot for free, utilise a district centre car park, visit a local museum, enjoy a community bonfire, or receive essential counselling, when we are still throwing money down the drain, which moves us to our amendments. The setting of a budget is no more than a promissory note on which any organisation intends to deliver during the forthcoming financial year. However, what has become clear in recent years is that many issues are brought to council in terms of saving proposals and nothing more than poorly conceived and badly thought-through ambitions rather than firm-up financial policy decisions. We will, as we do every year, point to the fact that the council budget is something of a mock event. There is never any attempt to drill down properly and look at what is on line's head of council spending and then work up, running a red pen either through or under every single line of every element of what we spend. We've never done it. The simple reality, we believe, is that nobody in power wants to do it. But it's achievable. Savings are there to be made, and efficiencies are there to be taken advantage of, but only if the will is there to do the job properly. Instead, we have a series of headline grabbers more designed to populate a sell on a column sheet in terms of presenting a balanced budget or to show that the administration are making tough decisions rather than generate any actual savings. But in reality, many budget proposals are not But in reality, many budget proposals are not easily achievable, if achievable at all. Take district centre car parking charges and community park charging as prime examples. Last February, the administration voted through parking charges for district centres and community parks. And yet, an entire year later, the district car parking element still hasn't been implemented. This is because neither the administration or the officers concerned had the first clue how to go about it. A year later, a consultation is still ongoing and that is despite a calling around the traffic regulation order which actually referred the matter back to the decision-maker to reconsider because, again, none of the groundwork had been done regarding the broader implications of implementing such a scheme. Thank you councillor Harrington for leading on that. The terms of charging for district centres, the impact on the public highway were ignored. There was no analysis as to the impact on footfall in district centres and indeed the detrimental impact this would have on local traders. In Garth, these proposals will undoubtedly push motorists onto street parking situations in the oldest part of the town, which is already heavily congested and without the proper infrastructure to accommodate more and more and more vehicles on the public highway. This will lead to a demand for traffic regulation orders and, God forbid, could even endanger the public. Charging to parking in public parks finally blows any claims the administration make about Leeds being a great place to live in in terms of health and wellbeing out of the water. Lord Mayor, the week after charging was imposed at Temple Newsam, the car parking question became subject to an illegal traveller encampment. I have asked the relevant department if each individual vehicle and caravan has gone through the necessary process of paying and displaying or whatever the appropriate payment method is, and I also asked if fixed penalty notices had been applied. I was given assurances that this was actually indeed the case. However, officers can rest equally assured that there will be a tracking of this process for each and every penalty notice towards a conclusion, and if any charges and costs are not recovered, then we will be asking the obvious question around if charges have been applied, enforced and progressed fairly and in a non-discriminatory way. This is another example of when a policy has been implemented without any thought as to the many variables that could come in from left field at any time. Our group would like to thank members of the administration who voted with their heads at the recent scrutiny meeting, not on party lines, on this issue and elected to send the matter back to the executive. It was equally interesting and telling to note that the members who supported the calling were not necessarily the firebrands who came into council with a mission to change the world but then very quickly fell into line once given a job. But nevertheless, to those who did support the calling, we offer our sincere thanks. Sadly, as expected, that fell on deaf ears, but it does prove there are a few independent thinkers within the administration who we hope, along with other opposition groups, will support our amendment to reverse charging at district centres and community car parks. We have today put forward an amendment to reintroduce community bonfires. In the grand scheme of things, this might seem like a fairly trivial demand, but actually it isn't. Since the council sees community bonfires, antisocial behaviour over the bonfire period has risen. That's what the police are telling me.
Please, members, could we allow councillor Dobson to speak? Thank you.
Lord Mayor, just to remind everybody here, I've got all day. I'll stir my feet as long as I need to to get my points heard.
You can go on councillor Dobson.
In silence. Lord Mayor, just again, with the same courtesy that we all expended to the leader, we expect to be heard with the same deference.
Greed.
I can sit it out, guys? The police have told us that they are no longer able to patrol and police community bonfires delivered by third-party organisations, such as our own bonfire in Garth, hosted by Garth and District Lions. If the council recommences hosting community bonfires, there would undoubtedly be less unsupervised private events, less nuisance bonfires, less improper use of fireworks over a prolonged period and much less work for an already stretched ambulance and fire service. Just as with bowling, which we are coming to presently, it is almost as if there's a pattern forming around the Parks Department or whatever it wishes to call itself these days that do not want to do things rather than where they can make significant savings. Ten years ago, I was involved in very difficult negotiations with the Leeds bowling community. In the early days of austerity and before the obligatory 5% council tax rise, this authority worked extensively with the bowling community to get bowling to a cost-neutral position for the city. That was a difficult negotiation of which I still bear the scars, but it was the right thing to do. It secured bowling for many communities across the city that loved the sport but at the same time protected the council's financial position. Ten years later, we are told that half the greens have to disappear or costs to members have to rise steeply or a combination of the two. If that all sounds very vague, it is because the proposals have been vague and even at this stage, nobody seems to know what the desired outcome is for the local authority. Our group are not surprised when it was decided to leave the status quo in place until the end of the summer, but we do not think that decision was based on any feedback and far more likely that the relevant department and the executive member simply found themselves out of their depth in dealing with the issue and needed a breather. There are, however, some questions. If, as claimed, participation has gone down over the last 10 years, why has the local authority allowed this to happen? We have never seen anything advertising or promoting the sport. Why has the gap between council expenditure and a cost-neutral position widened so dramatically? This should have been reviewed year on year on year to secure the cost-neutral position that was negotiated in 2015. The fact that hasn't been done is nothing short of negligence. Somebody has taken their eye off the ball. This council should be doing everything within its power to promote social activity and health and wellbeing. This is an extract from an email from a member of the bowling community. Thank you for your support. I'm a pensioner living alone. Bowling is very important, physically, mentally and socially. Leeds City Council do not realise what the impact of closing greens will have on our community. Thank you for trying. That's from a member who wishes to remain anonymous from Holbeck Moor Bowling Club. We urge council to support our amendment today and work collegiately with the bowling community to help not just save the sport but ensure that we do not find ourselves here in another 10 years. Child bereavement services, no one would ever claim that being an elected member of council is an easy job, but does anybody else ever think like this? I'm not quite sure what I'm doing here or with this project or how to start it. Am I overthinking and procrastinating? I don't know. I feel like people are expecting a lot from me and I don't know if I can deliver. I'm presenting to a big group of people next week. I feel really nervous and anxious about it. I wish I was as good at them at presenting. It just doesn't come so easy. I've put loads of work into this report, but is it good enough? Well, here's the next question. How on earth could anybody think it was a good idea to offer anxiety training to elected members when the administration has elected not to review a contract supporting families who've been through a bereavement? Can any of us say with a straight face that our priorities and the pressures of everyday life is higher up our agenda than what it must feel like to lose a loved one? Seriously? What on earth was the driver of this initiative thinking of? Being independent means we are able to strip away the usual party political silliness and give credit to members of council where due. Councillor Stevenson, shadow cabinet member for children and families, brought this to our attention when he said publicly the service had delivered a whopping 1,200 support sessions a year for 270 families. He added, the service and the support it provides to children, often in vulnerable situations, should have been at the very top, sorry, beg your pardon, the very bottom of the cut lists, not at the top. Please, council, support our amendment. Let's put heartbroken families above anxious councillors. Of course, at the same time, council is yet again increasing council tax by an inflation busting 5% and at the same time, our sheltered housing tenants, many of whom are the most vulnerable people in society, are again being squeezed with extra charges. Again, surely the administration must realise that only so many times we can do this and only so many times tenants can sustain incremental rises year on year on year. Just as with council tax, there is only so much flesh you can pick off the bones and, to mix metaphors, we are again reaching the end of the road. Why does the administration continue time after time to go for the low-hanging fruit which is easy to apply and administer rather than consider the fact that our tenants will be struggling with household bills, the loss of their winter fuel payment and from April, massive hikes in utility charges that were announced yesterday? Council, thinking needs to be far more joined up around the imposition and burden we are placing upon the individual. I have recently finished a really excellent book. It's called Westminster: How It Works and Why It Doesn't. It's fascinating, if a little bit grim, read about how our political system isn't working and how most MPs who are not part of the executive are nothing more than voting fodder and even members of their own executive are let down by poorly drafted legislation. I make the point because it's becoming increasingly clear to our group, Leeds is becoming a microcosm for that model. Earlier, I alluded to the fact that several members voted with their heads rather than on party lines at a recent calling, and I'm looking for members around this chamber today to perhaps dig a little deeper this time round, think about why you are here, think about what you want to achieve and think about the people who put you into office and perhaps support some of our well-thought-out, fully-costed and sensible amendments. Lord Mayor, with that, I move the amendments on behalf of Garth and Salford Independent. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Dobson. Following that, I'm very pleased to let you know that councillor Miller is my councillor of the month. Please give him a hand of applause. We've received great feedback. Did you not hear him? That's right. So you get a Lord Mayor present after this councillor Miller, okay? Well done. Right, councillor Field, please, the second amendment of 37 to 43.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, our second amendment 37 to 43.
Thank you very much. Okay, we shall now call for a comfort break and that's for just 10 minutes. So it's now 15:44, so please return in the next 10 minutes. Thank you. So please return in the next ten minutes. Thank you. Okay. Okay. I will now call on councillor Smith to move amendments forty-four to forty-nine, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. My Lord Mayor, fellow councillors and the people of Leeds. We, the three councillors of the local independent party, collectively represent around seventy thousand residents across the city. Our duty is clear, to stand up for those residents, especially those whose voices are being ignored. Budget cuts are being made without proper consideration for the very real people they impact. Every line item represents a service that residents rely on, one they feel they have already paid for through their council tax and they rightly ask why they are being made to pay more while receiving less, especially with yet another 5% increase in council tax again this year. These aren't just numbers in a spreadsheet, they're lives, communities and essential support systems. We've heard many references about the reasons for these cuts, one side blaming the other. But our residents do not care about the political point scoring, nor the he said, she said of it all. The people we represent and the people right across the city who you all represent just want the services that they need. That is what they expect from us. And that is why we have to be fighting to deliver as their elected representatives. We acknowledge that difficult financial decisions must be taken, but we also recognise that the departments facing the most strain, adult social care and children's and families, are the very ones that ultimately are being affected the most by these cuts, adding even more pressure to their already overstretched staff and the services. That's not just financially unsound, but morally wrong. Recognising the tough financial challenges, our budget amendments are for very small amounts, but for the services that really matter to people, things that impact people and things that really make a difference to the lives of people. Because the people we represent are at the very heart of everything we do. Our amendments are for all fully costed and backed by robustness report. They offer practical solutions to protect vital services, ensuring our most vulnerable residents are not left behind. And with that, I'd like to thank the officers who worked with us on this, particularly Richard Ellis in the finance team. Our amendments are very simple. Reverse the proposed closure of the child bereavement support service because no family suffering loss should be left without support. I just wish something like this had been available forty-five years ago when tragedy struck my own family. Reopen the West Leeds Visitor Centre, an essential resource for my own local community and cultural heritage for residents across the west of the city and beyond. It's been closed for too long with no real savings achieved. Reverse the review of the bowling green provision, ensuring that our community spaces remain open and accessible for future generations. This is such a small potential saving that will undoubtedly cost more than it will ever save. It's merely going to impact on a different line in the spreadsheet. Reinstate the housing advisory panel. I'm asked repeatedly for this from our residents, the tenants in our homes. Give in our tenants back a much needed voice in their own housing decisions that affect their daily lives. Do something different and really look at what we need. Fund a proper feasibility study into the children's and families portfolio. Identify savings without reducing frontline services for vulnerable children. Fund a feasibility study into expanding in-house provision for children's social care to improve service delivery while reducing the costly outsourcing. Two items that have the potential for significant financial benefits on future budgets and decision making. Stop the continual growth of costs which spiral out of control year on year, causing the majority of our budgetary pressures. Finally, conduct a proper feasibility study into Putty Civic Hall, exploring sustainable revenue options to prevent closure and keep this vital community hub operational. The people of this city don't want continual cuts, they want growth. But how do we grow once we've closed everything we hold dear or we've simply sold it off? We thank the administration for recognising the importance of Abbey House Museum and securing its funding, its future, especially in the face of the closure of Thwaites Mill last year. But we must ask, what research has been done to assess the true impact of closing vital facilities such as these and the other things already mentioned? Services that have such a massive impact on the people of our great city. If our amendments are not passed here today, vital services will be lost. Vulnerable people, especially our children, elderly and those without a voice, will suffer the most. As we heard recently in his very chamber, to govern is to choose. And this council has a duty to make choices that reflect the needs of its residents, not just its balance sheet. The books must be balanced, but not at the cost of our communities, not at the cost of our children, not at the cost of those who rely on housing services, bereavement support or local cultural institutions. As elected members, we were all elected to serve our communities. I therefore implore you to vote not with your whip, but with your conscience and support these amendments. And with that, my Lord Mayor, I move the amendments for the local independent party. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Smith. I will now call on councillor Kidger to second amendments forty-four to forty-nine.
My dear Lord Mayor, I have great pleasure in formally seconding the amendments forty-four to forty-nine on behalf of the local independent group. I am sure you will agree, these make great sense and represent the people across the city. These are fully costed and are relatively small amounts of money, but yet have a big impact on so many people. Should these cuts go ahead, we have great concern where they will put strain to other council and NHS services. We do our best to put the people we represent first and centre in any decision we take. As councillor Smith has said, we urge you not to vote through your whip, but with your heart. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kidger. I'll now call councillor Dixon to move amendments fifty to fifty-six, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll also start with some thank yous today. First of all, thank you to my ward colleagues, councillor Pogson-Golden and councillor Chesterfield, who've helped me put today's amendments together. But crucially, the staff who have worked hard in the finance department to try and get the answers we've all been looking for and those staff who've been asked for those answers, I guess, as well, because I bet we've put a bit of pressure on them with the numerous groups we've got in the chamber nowadays. So thank you for them for listening and facilitating our amendments. And I'd like to just kind of acknowledge a little bit what's been said already. I think it's quite clear, as a country, we've been governed poorly for quite a long time both by what a local resident describes to me as a blue team and a red team. Councillor Scott will know exactly what I'm on about. And just nothing changes, no matter who's in charge. Just as councillor Dobson mentioned last year and this year as well, nothing will change. We'll be constantly looking for savings and efficiencies and the cycle will go on. Interestingly, at the last budget, most councillors from the Labour group called for a better and more sustainable amount of funding. The silence this year is definitely deafening, a bit embarrassing and quite frankly, a disservice to the residents of our city. This administration often speaks bad about austerity, but actually practises the same thing instead. Today, the Labour party seems to have become more of an anti-pensioner pressure group, attacking winter fuel payments, private pensions. attacking winter fuel payments, private pensions, stopping them from being active by charging for the parking in the parks, reducing their opportunities to play crown green balls, and then nationally not even funding an hospital to help them out when they're in a time of need. The only reprieve was when they backtracked on the neighbourhood networks, and as a trustee of Middleton Elderly since 2017, I've seen how that proposal alone has really hurt the people of Leeds, and in fact, their view of the Labour administration in Leeds. So I'm going to turn to our amendments now. So amendment 50 calls for a feasibility study into granting community sports clubs in Leeds the right to lease their sports grounds from local authority on a long-term, full repairing and insuring lease at peppercorn rent. I called for this last year, I put white paper for it. It's a sensible amendment, and there was honourable Labour colleagues who didn't agree. And I think if it were your idea, you'd be voting for it; it's that simple. So now you've got the chance to vote for it again. A lease would have probably five main benefits, which I'll outline now. It'll strengthen community sports and wellbeing, greater community ownership, long-term leases would give clubs more stability and autonomy, it will foster a stronger sense of community ownership, improve sports participation, secure tenure would encourage clubs to invest in programmes that increase sports engagement across all age groups, health and wellbeing benefits, there'll be more people engaging in sports, which will lead to improved physical and mental health in our local population, the financial sustainability for clubs. So the long-term investment in security for clubs, clubs will be more likely to seek fundings and grants if they add security or tenure, as many funding bodies require these long leases. It'll reduce financial burden on clubs, a peppercorn rent keeps overheads low, allowing clubs to reinvest resources into facilities, coaching and community outreach. There'll be commercial opportunities for clubs, with secure tenure, clubs may generate revenue through sponsorships, events or facility hire. Better facility management and development, this will encourage maintenance and upgrades from clubs. A full repairing and insuring lease incentivised clubs to actually maintain and improve the facilities, reducing the burden on the local authority. The potential for additional facilities clubs can develop, like infrastructure such as pre-g pitches, changing rooms or community spaces, benefiting local users. Reducing the burden on the local authority, lower maintenance costs for the council—this by transferring maintenance responsibilities to clubs means the council saves on upkeep—more efficient use of public assets, underutilised or poorly maintained sites could be transformed into thriving community hubs, strategic alignment with local policies. It supports Leeds City Council's local objectives around health, community development and asset efficiency. So the legal and structural considerations, it'll give clubs clarity on the responsibilities. A feasibility study would outline legal, financial and operational responsibilities, ensuring a smooth transition. The study would assess risks as financial viability, legal implications and potential for underuse or mismanagement, so that'll cover the risk mitigations. Best practices insights, there'll be reviewing similar models in other cities and would help tailor an approach that works best for Leeds. A feasibility study would provide evidence-based insights into how long-term leases at peppercorn rent could benefit community sports clubs, local government and residents alike, by understanding potential challenges and solutions. Leeds City Council can make an informed decision that supports sustainable community sports development, for the better of our communities and our community clubs. Amendment 51: I believe there is numerous benefits of reintroducing community bonfires and fireworks displays in our city. I don't know why people grumble about that.
Neither do I.
Anyway, these traditions have been absent from our calendars in recent years, and their return promises to bring a wealth of positive impacts to our communities. Community bonfires and firework displays serve us more than just entertainment; they are pivotal in strengthening the social fabric of our neighbourhoods. These events provide a platform for residents of all ages and backgrounds to come together, fostering a sense of unity and belonging. This was noted in Leeds City Council's Enquiry for Environment, Housing and Community Scrutiny Board back in March 2021, which was titled 'Tackling the Antisocial Use of Fireworks', it read: 'Such events bring real benefits in terms of community cohesion and often provide fundraising opportunities for local charities. Supporting local charities and businesses, the reintroduction of these events offers significant opportunities for local charities and businesses. By hosting stalls, food vendors and entertainment, local enterprises can showcase their offerings to a broad audience, stimulating economic activity. Additionally, community-led events can serve as fundraisers, providing essential support for local organisations and energy. Enhancing public safety in the absence of organised public events, individuals may resort to private bonfires and unsupervised firework displays, which can lead to safety hazards and increase instances of antisocial behaviour. Official well-managed events ensure that safety protocols are in place, reducing the risk of accidents and disturbances. And preserving our cultural heritage, Bonfire Night is deeply rooted in British history and culture. Reintroducing these celebrations allows us to honour and preserve our traditions, passing them down to future generations. It provides an opportunity for educational engagement, where the historical significance of the event can be shared, enriching our collective cultural understanding. Boosting mental wellbeing, the communal experience of attending bonfires and fireworks displays can have a positive impact on mental health. These events often offer a break from daily routines, allowing individuals to relax and enjoy shared experiences. The sense of community and belonging fostered during such gatherings can alleviate fears of isolation and promote overall wellbeing. I spoke last year about my own fond memories of visiting Middleton Park when my family was a child, crucially the fact that these events were free and allowed all families to attend and make memories, no matter what their financial situation. Encouraging civic engagement, so organising community events necessitates collaboration among residents, local authorities and organisations. This collaborative effort encourages civic engagement, empowering individuals to take an active role in their communities. Such involvement can lead to the development of new skills, stronger networks and a more vibrant civic life. In conclusion, the reintroduction of community bonfires and firework displays in Leeds stands to offer a multi-faceted benefit, from strengthening community bonds and supporting local economies to enhancing public safety and preserving our rich cultural heritage. Let us embrace a revival of these cherished traditions, coming together to celebrate in a spirit of unity, joy and mutual respect. Who knows, perhaps this will build a positive relationship with the people of Leeds and the local authority. Amendment 52: this looks at funding a feasibility study to identify a suitable property for temporary homelessness accommodation for Leeds residents. This will have several benefits, particularly in terms of cost savings and strategic planning. Here are some of the key advantages: Cost savings in temporary accommodation. Leeds City Council currently incur significant costs by hiring temporary accommodation, example hostel hotels or private sector leases. Earlier this year, I was made aware of up to 500 people are housed in temporary accommodation in Leeds. Even at £30 a night per room, that's a substantial amount for round 100— if you divide 500 by 100—sorry, by four, a family of four. So you've got 125 people at £30 a night, it's at least £1.4 million a year, and that's on the low side. So I think having our own building would actually pay for itself in the long run. So a feasibility study could actually help determine the viability of acquiring or developing a council-owned property that large, reducing ongoing rental expenses. Owning or leasing a dedicated property could provide long-term cost savings compared to continually paying high private sector rates. Better budget planning and financial efficiency, a feasibility study would provide detailed financial projections, helping the council assess the long-term savings of investing in its own temporary accommodation rather than relying on expensive external providers. The study can identify potential funding sources, example government grants, public-private partnerships to minimise upfront costs. Improved service delivery and stability, council-managed accommodation allows for better control over service quality, ensuring that individuals experiencing homelessness receive appropriate support in a stable and well-maintained environment. I've had several instances recently where people have put up in temporary accommodation, which I wouldn't house a dog in, and I think this is one way of us having control, to make sure that the properties are safe, and I'm sure everyone else had casework at one point, showing that some of the disgusting accommodation we're actually using as a set. A dedicated property can be adapted to meet the specific needs of homeless individuals, including access to support services, rather than relying on general purposes of hotels or B&amp;Bs. Strategic asset investment, identifying and acquiring a suitable property allows the council to create a long-term asset that can be used flexibly for homelessness accommodation or other social housing needs in the future. A feasibility study ensures the property aligns with planning regulations, zoning laws and community needs before investment is made. Reduction on social and economic costs, providing stable and well-planned temporary accommodation can reduce reliance on emergency services, healthcare and social support by offering better living conditions. It helps to reduce the negative impact on individuals and families experiencing homelessness by preventing unnecessary moves between accommodations which can disrupt employment, education and wellbeing. Evidence-based decision-making, a feasibility study provides data-driven insights into the best locations, property types and financial models for temporary accommodation. The study can highlight potential risks, ensuring that decisions are based on a thorough evaluation rather than assumptions. Compliance with government policies and targets, councils are often required to meet government targets for reducing homelessness. A feasibility study can ensure that any new accommodation aligns with the national housing and homelessness strategies. It can also support applications for funding from central government or charitable organisations. Increased flexibility and control, by securing its own property, the council gains greater control over tenancy agreements, policies and management, rather than being dependent on third-party landlords. The flexibility allows for better planning in response to fluctuating demand for temporary accommodation. So investing in a feasibility study is a proactive step forward, reducing long-term costs associated with hiring temporary accommodation. It enables Leeds City Council to make an informed decision on acquiring a cost-effective, sustainable and well-suited property, ultimately improving outcomes for homeless individuals while saving public funds. Amendment 53: if these closures were to go ahead and the bowling greens were to be closed, the greens won't stop costing the council money. I suspect some sites will be hit by fly tipping, they need securing, some sites will be vandalised at one point, and some buildings may have to be removed due to lack of maintenance or indeed, they'll need maintaining. These all costs are, I suspect, more than the proposed savings. The figures just don't stack up, they seem to change with the wind, and quite frankly, it seems as though everything has been put in a hat and picked out with a random figure created. The annual maintenance costs are currently around £350,000. That's the latest figure I've got, but it does change. It's a small amount of money for what it offers the community. Leeds City Council were to reverse the review of Bowling Green Provision in the city. Several advantages could arise: it preserves community spaces, bowling greens serve valuable community hubs, particularly for older residents, keeping them open helps maintain social connections, reduce isolation and improve mental wellbeing. The health and wellbeing benefits, lawn bowls is a low-impact sport that promotes physical activity among all age groups, particularly older adults. It helps improve mobility, coordination and overall fitness, contributing to public health objectives. One of my local clubs, Cranmore Bowls Club, is one of two in my ward under threat, and in that club we have three members over 90 years old. They do not drive, they do not have licences, they walk to the bowling club and it is the only time they get out of the house. They're in their 90s, it's the only physical exercise they do, which is walking to the bowling club, playing bowls, walking back home. It's a lifeline for so many, and I'm sure that Cranmore Bowling Club isn't the only one with over 90s playing the game in their club. Protecting this is protecting a heritage sport, so bowls is a longstanding tradition in the UK, with deep roots in its community. Reversing any review that threatens provision helps to sustain this heritage and ensures future generations can participate in the sport. If we close these clubs and propose a move into other sites, then you're killing these clubs, these clubs won't exist, because people won't go to Middleton Park Bowling Club to join Cranmore Bowling Club, they'll go to join Middleton Bowling Club, and that's Cranmore Bowling Club gone in a couple of years' time. That group might move there, play there for a year, but eventually they'll be amalgamated into the club that's there, which reduces the amount of teams to play against overall in the long term. Bowling encourages intergenerational engagement, bowling greens can be used for community events and schools, helping bridge the gap between younger and older generations through shared activities. Bowling greens contribute to local economies by attracting members, visitors from other cities, perhaps Bradford neighbourhood and cup matches, for example, and even offering, where there's tournaments offered, they generate spending in local businesses, so clubs also can provide employment and volunteer opportunities. Maximising green space is something we should all be looking to do. Bowling greens contribute to the city's green space, enhancing biodiversity, aesthetics and environmental sustainability, keeping them intact aligns with Leeds' broader environmental goals. Preventing club closures and loss of memberships, closure or reduction of greens could lead to disillusions impacting members who rely on these facilities for recreation and competition. Maintaining provision ensures the continuity of club activities. Reducing the burden on other services by supporting social and physical activity, bowling greens help reduce reliance on healthcare and social services. This could indirectly save public funds by promoting active lifestyles and reducing loneliness-related health issues. Public support reputation, reversing a review that may have led to closures would likely be well-received by residents and community groups, reinforcing the council's commitment to supporting local sports and recreational activities. Reversing a review of Bowling Green Provision in Leeds involves evaluating both the cost of maintaining these facilities and the potential financial benefits they offer, and we could investigate these further in partnership with the bowling community rather than against them. Amendment 54: this amendment is simply to highlight why other organisations were never given the opportunity to be considered for the premises of Middleton Ledge Centre, why ward members were informed only a week before it went to executive board, and crucially to see if the letting, leasing or asset transfer of any other public property can be made more transparent, especially with opposition party members. This funding is necessary to conduct a thorough and impartial review of the proposed lease out of Middleton Ledge Centre to a third party. It's a small investment, but one that carries significant weight in our community's future. The importance of Middleton Ledge Centre is not just that it's a sports facility, it's a vital hub for health, wellbeing and social connection, it serves residents of all ages, from families and schoolchildren to senior citizens and community groups. Any decision regarding its management must be taken with great care, ensuring that needs of the community remain at the heart of the process. Whilst we support the school developing its facilities, we also want to secure the community use for the local groups and instilled in something we have been told will happen, but of course, only time will tell. So why is a review necessary? Leasing the centre to a third party could bring potential benefits such as increased efficiency or investment. However, it also raises critical questions: will community access and affordability be And amendment 55: we have an opportunity to take a significant step forward making our city cleaner, safer and more responsible. The proposed increase of £271,000 to the community's housing and environment budget, which will fund eight additional enforcement officers, is a necessary investment in the future of Leeds. By strengthening our enforcement team, we can tackle persistent issues such as fly tipping, dog fouling and illegal parking more effectively. This will not only improve the quality of life for our residents— This will not only improve the quality of life for our residents but also generate additional revenue through fines, ensuring that those who disregard the rules are held accountable. Enhancing community wellbeing first and foremost. This investment will have a direct positive impact on wellbeing of our residents. Illegal dumping of waste, irresponsible pet ownership and tailless parking are not just minor inconveniences. They affect the cleanliness, safety and overall appeal of our neighbourhoods. Fly tipping in particular poses environmental hazards, attracts vermin and reduces the visual appeal of our communities. By increasing enforcement, we can deter these behaviours, ensure that our public spaces remain clean, safe and enjoyable for everyone. Encouraging responsibility and accountability. So a stronger enforcement team means a stronger message. We will not tolerate actions that diminish our city's quality of life. With additional officers on the ground, we can take swifter action against those who engage in fly tipping and allow their dogs to foul public spaces or people who park irresponsibly. Increasing prosecutions and issuing fines will save both as a deterrent and a means of recovering costs associated with clearing the waste away and addressing public nuisances. It is only fair that those who disregard the rules contribute financially to rectifying the damage they cause. Financial sustainability and revenue generation. One of the most compelling aspects of this investment is that it is not merely an expenditure, it's a strategic move towards financial sustainability. The additional enforcement officers will enable the council to issue more fines and pursue more prosecutions, generate revenue and can offset the initial investment. This means that over time the increase in budget can pay for itself while simultaneously improving the city's living conditions. More enforcement does not just mean more rules, it means a fairer and more efficient system where the costs of maintaining a clean and orderly city do not fall solely on responsibility of taxpayers. Supporting economic growth and local pride. A cleaner and well regulated city is a more attractive place to live, work and invest in. Businesses thrive in environments that are well maintained and properly managed. Residents take pride in their communities when they see that issues like littering and illegal parking are actively addressed. By reinforcing our enforcement efforts, we are making a statement that Leeds is a city that values responsibility, fairness and a high standard of living. The proposed increase in the community's housing and environmental budget is a practical necessar- 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 I'll say it in my head, and forward thinking step for our city. By funding eight additional enforcement officers, we are not just increasing capacity, we are reinforcing our commitment to a cleaner, safer and more responsible Leeds. This investment will bring long term benefits from improved community wellbeing and increased accountability to financial sustainability and economic growth. Let us seize the opportunity to enhance our city, let us take a stand against those who disregard our shared spaces and let us ensure that Leeds continues to be a place we're all proud to call home. Amendment fifty six. To reverse the parking charges in our city's parks. We've seen Labour councillors at scrutiny vote to take this back in. We know people are uncomfortable with it and it's honour the executive board want it. Recently Donald Trump described Zelensky as a dictator. Perhaps he might want to share his view on our Labour Executive Board of Leeds City Council. Of course, of course I say that with a bit of tongue in cheek, but when you ignore literally ninety percent of the city calling for these charges to be stopped, there's only one way it's going. So where is the Labour that used to be the voice of the people? This affects us all, our parks. These green spaces are the heart of our city, offering a place for relaxation, exercise and connection with nature. However, the introduction of parking charges has placed a necessary burden on residents and visitors alike. Reversing these fees is not only the right thing to do, but it's also the decision that benefits our entire community. Encouraging access for all. Parks should be accessible to everyone regardless of their income. Parking fees create an unfair barrier, making it harder for families, seniors and low income individuals to enjoy these spaces. No one should have to think twice about visiting a park because of financial constraints. By removing these charges, we ensure that our parks remain open and welcoming to all. Supporting physical and mental wellbeing. Spending time in nature has been proven to reduce stress, improve mental health and encourage an active lifestyle. However, when people have to pay to park, they may opt out of visiting parks altogether. Reversing these charges means encouraging healthier lifestyles, fostering a community where outdoor activity is easy and accessible. Boosting local economy and tourism. Parks, especially Middleton Park, attracts visitors. It attracts visitors from all over to Leeds Urban Bike Park. Visitors support our local businesses, we want the visitors in Middleton. Families heading up to the park often stop at nearby cafes, restaurants and shops. When parking fees deter people from visiting, local businesses will suffer. Removing these charges will encourage more foot traffic, ultimately benefiting our local community, economy. Reducing parking in our residential areas. With parking fees in place, many people tried, already proven, will try to avoid the cost by simply parking in our neighbourhoods. This leads to congestion, frustration and inconvenience for our local residents. By eliminating these fees, we encourage visitors to use designated parking areas, make life easier for those who live nearby. Making our parks more welcome. Parks are meant to be a space for relaxation, fun and connection, not a place where people worry about parking meters and fines. By reversing these charges, we send a clear message, our parks belong to the people and everyone is welcome to enjoy them without financial stress. So a call to action for you all. We have a chance to make a positive change for our city. Let's work together to ensure that our parks remain free and accessible to all and I urge all local people and voices to be heard and reverse these parking fees. Let's stand up for fairness, health and community spirit. Vote for our amendments today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dixon. I'll now call on councillor Chesterfield to second amendments fifty to fifty six.
Thank you Lord Mayor and I'm happy to second and reserve the right to speak, please. Thank you.
Okay, I will now call on councillor Newton to move amendments fifty seven to sixty two.
Apologies for being late today and thanks to those who allowed me to go last today and thanks to councillor Dobson for dragging it out for me. A lot of everything that, a lot of everything that needs to be said has been said already and we've got a lot of voting to do, so you're all going to like me for being brief. You won't like councillor Finnegan who's told me he's going to use his full five minutes. Firstly, I want to put on record my thanks on behalf of the MBIs to Richard Ellis and his team for putting all this together, but also a personal thanks to Richard for being patient with me because this is the first time I've had to do this, given my new role as leader and I've probably asked some really stupid questions along the way. You know, it's my generation that's going to take this forward and I want to make sure that I understand it for the future, so thanks for spending time with me, Richard, and helping me through that. I was looking at my budget speech from last year, thinking whether I could reflect and think if anything had changed, but then I thought, I'm actually delivering this on behalf of the people of Marley who have put me here and local government is at the coal face of communities and they would say that nothing has changed. For example, they get up, they drive and get the bus down Chilwell Hill in Marley, turn to their right and seal a pile of steel and concrete that is meant to be the new White Rose train station. And that station is the perfect metaphor to summarise everything wrong with the financial situation we face. The project is a mixture of city council, combined authority, D F T, a former Conservative MP, a new Labour MP and the private sector, that is basically everyone who has the power to do something and there is nothing to show for it. And everything we propose in this budget and in our amendments today cannot change that, but I don't think it's the sole responsibility of the council either. But that is a great example of where you would think that everyone working together would deliver a project, but clearly not. Until the people of Marley see workmen back down there and do not think their, I do not think their mood will change, but that is just one example of a project that has the potential to drive economic growth. It either needs to be delivered by one person or the public sector solely because clearly no one can work together. But also Parliament has to use its ultimate power to get through red tape to ensure that people can feel the benefit of projects delivered by local government. When Richard took our group through his PowerPoint demonstrating the finances involved, we were just speechless and I think all of the other groups amendments reflect the same because nobody has the ultimate answer to all this. The rate payer is now contributing more than ever to the budget of the council and no one is brave enough to grasp the nettle and do something about that. The last fourteen years have not helped, but Richard and his team has a thankless task and I think there needs to be a situation where the government realise that they can only do so much and the government needs to hold our hand rather than more devolution. So in all the circumstances, the proposed budget is somewhat fair, but as a group we would like to see a better allocation of the settlement received from the government. You know, we welcome the further government funding, we welcome the Home First Programme, we welcome the reviews into children's centres, transport services in adult services, but what we're disappointed with is the potential for redundancies. Although the council are committed to paying the real living wage, there will be some people out there, even if it's for their wellbeing, who would prefer to have a job in the council in trade for redundancies and a colleague being paid nine p more an hour. So turning to our budget amendments, I told you I'd be quick. We propose a reduction in the special allowances for members and reduce the cost of full time trade union conveners. We counter that with an increase in MICE and an increase in the children and families budget for an employment and performance team. As a group, we have always believed in the reduction to special allowances and trade union conveners. If the council has no choice but to make redundancies and cut staff from closures around the city, then surely us councillors need to take some of the burden also. As a group, we have always believed in MICE money and it's a great tool for voluntary groups to reach out to us as local councillors who are best positioned to know where that money is well received. So a larger allocation to councillors would help funnel the funds to those in need. Second, we have proposed two additional bin collection rounds in Marley. Yes, I know it deals with Marley, but Marley covers two council wards and it is still a big town. It has a lot of bins to collect and the nearest recycling point is the inconvenient journey to Kirkstall or Middleton. Not only does this reduce the burden for their hardworking staff that cover Marley, but can counteract fly tipping in the area and set an example for the rest of the city. Our third amendment involves no manor, again for us in Marley, but we want to see whether it can be turned into something useful, whether that can assist the burden that the city council faces or whether it can assist something at NHS level. If this can be done successfully, again, it allows the rest of the city to take note and turn a negative closure into something positive. Fourth, Marley again, this time but the big post office in the town centre. Marley is one of the larger post offices in the outer south area and has some facilities that allow people from neighbouring areas to come and use. Like all wards, we have seen high street banks closing, the accessibility to cash becoming redundant, but this is a society and cultural change and it is only Parliament that can pass law that controls commercial leases, rents, tax breaks that can help high streets and the culture of how people use the high street. A feasibility study therefore, excuse me, into a banking hub can help others across the city if they are facing similar pressures. Fifth, a review of the bowling greens and increased funding for citywide grit, for a citywide grit. A lot has been said already on the bowling greens and we echo everything that has been said, so we don't have to repeat that, but the gritting situation in Marley was quite bad this winter. I know this was an issue citywide, but Marley is built on seven hills and is a key route through the motorway, Kirklees, Bradford and Wakefield, all the way to Leeds. It needs to be treated like a motorway in itself, so we see no reason why an additional grit couldn't be funded. Again, if that works, then that can be copied by other areas in the city. Lastly, an increase in the borrowing for new social housing and the use of right to buy receipts to partially fund that. This is nothing new and we all know that more house, that we need more housing and we feel that the private sector has done a lot of the heavy lifting in this area. If the government are to abolish no fault evictions, then landlords will simply pull out of the market because they have lost control over their freehold land. That will then increase the burden on the local authority and Marley has had no new housing for forty plus years. Councillor Stevenson has said to me, two years in a running now that our budget has been Marley, Marley, Marley. Okay, it's now three years. But our amendments reflect a desire to reinvent Marley as a case study for positive change, urging support for innovative solutions to address local challenges. Many other members will have projects and tasks in their ward, just like the White Rose train station, something that is a symbol of ineffective collaboration between various stakeholders. The council will continue to bleed cash if that does not change, but I believe that this goes beyond this budget meeting. Parliament can only do so much as well and it may be that those involved have an individual duty to take responsibility, otherwise the wastage will continue and our society will fall behind. I told you I'd be quick. I formally move the MBI budget amendments.
Thank you very much councillor Newton. I will now call on councillor Finnegan to second amendments fifty seven to sixty two, please.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I formally second our amendments and will exercise my right, I'm sure everybody's delighted to hear that, to speak at this particular point. And one of the things I would disagree with my leader about is the fact that it's only been Marley, Marley, Marley for the last three years. I'd say over twenty myself at this particular point and this year is no different. I think this is the twenty second budget meeting that I have actually sat through and to be honest, it is very like an annual pantomime, but the only thing that actually changes are the villains. And sometimes the villain is the Labour government as it was in two thousand and sometimes it's the coalition government as it was from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen and sometimes it is the Tory government, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty four and now it is the Labour government. I'm sure as eggs are eggs, if you sit around long enough, the whole cycle continues round again. And the problem is, and it doesn't matter who's polishing it, you cannot polish a turd. Fundamentally, the problem that we have is that the local government settlement from successive governments has been entirely and utterly inadequate. And year after year after year, we talk about, and whoever is polishing talks about the fact that we could and should be doing better from central government. Well, the fact of the matter is, we're not. And I have called year after year after year, and I think Andrew Carter's called year after year after year, about a role commission to look at different ways of making sure that local government is financed appropriately and we have an independent look at it, because if you leave it to governments of any persuasion, we're here year after year after year facing the same problems time and time and time again. So we do need to look at the way that we do finance local government, central government needs to do better. And indeed, if it wasn't for the fact that successive governments have avoided dealing with the social care challenges that we all face, we might be in a better position. If we could say we're going to raise council tax by four point nine nine percent and some of that was to go on other issues rather than propping up social care because it isn't adequately financed, then it might be more of a discussion and an honest debate, but all political parties have decided that they will abdicate responsibility and figuring out how you finance social care and we come round to this problem year and year and year again. And that is a great, great pity because until we get the social care issues resolved, we're going to be having these same budget meetings and the same pantomime will occur, I suspect, next year. And the government kicking the social care changes that it's suggesting up until what, twenty twenty eight or whatever it might be, after twenty one reviews, commissions and whatever else they've had on social care funding, is a great disappointment. Now to move on to the excellent amendments that my leader has suggested at this particular point, and unlike some of the councillors who claim to represent Marley in this chamber, these are genuinely about Marley and what we can do to improve Marley, such as what can we do about, what can we do about Noel, if you want me to, if you want me to carry on councillor Kidja, we can talk about electoral fraud and other such things if you wish to discuss it now, but.
Councillor Finnegan, stick to what you're here to speak about, please. Thank you.
Let us return specifically to the amendments in hand. No manor, and no manor is an older folk's home that has been closed. Regrettably, we're looking to see what we can do to make sure that it is repurposed for the benefits of Marley folk. More gritting, not only in Marley but in other areas, more bin services, not only Marley in other areas and the recommencement of a regular council house building programme in Marley that can be pushed out to other areas across Leeds at this particular point. For the first times, it's nineteen eighty one, we should be getting some new council housing in Marley on Wesley Street. We look forward to that. We think that there should be more and increased levels of council housing to deal with the council housing waiting list that we are dealing with in Marley and across the rest of Leeds. Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Prior. Councillor Prior?
Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to bring one figure to council's attention, and that is eight million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand pounds. Does anyone know what that figure represents? It's quite a specific figure. No? Councillor Lam's leaving the room sadly, but eight million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand is the figure that the Tories believe we can raise from the use of AI. It's quite a specific figure. It's not five million, it's not ten million, it's not eight million. It's eight million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand pounds. Councillor Lam said in his speech that they had worked in great detail on their budget, so I presume they know exactly how that eight million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand is put together. But they didn't put it in their amendments. They've not said it in any of the speeches. I wonder whether councillor Carter or councillor Flynn will be coming to the detail of that. But the one thing councillor Lam did say was removing unnecessary posts. So I think the thing the Tories aren't telling us is it's mass redundancies is how they are paying for their... You say rubbish, but you've provided no evidence to the contrary. And actually, some of your amendments were so similar to each other, perhaps you'd have done better if you'd written them with AI rather than using AI for them all. I think, well, perhaps artificial, probably not that intelligent. But I do want to pick up on Tory Budget Amendment Two, which talks about potholes, where you transfer five million pounds from the 106 balances to pothole repair. And again, the robustness report states that you can't state where this money exactly is coming from, because you know that resource cannot be incurred until a councillor is satisfied that the spend is consistent with the terms of the relevant 106 agreement. So the Tory amendments are relying on money that they don't know is there. But pothole repair is important, and fourteen years of the Tories has left a sixteen-point-three-billion national highways maintenance backlog, with two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million pounds of that backlog in Leeds alone, despite ongoing repairs from Leeds teams. And that's why the recent one-point-six-billion-pound funding boost from the new Labour government for pothole repairs nationwide is a positive step towards addressing fourteen years of neglect. And while that change won't happen overnight, this investment will improve road safety, efficiency and the transport system, making it easier for people to get around. I know that the Lib Dem Amendment Twenty-Five also seeks to address this matter, and while I think the Lib Dem amendment does put the cart before the horse a little bit, I do want to reassure council that we have a live piece of work, a series of trials with various suppliers such as JCB, Multivo and Jetpack to look at that exact issue. We're reviewing equipment and materials that have come to the market recently, and we'll be discussing their performance with other local highways authorities, where they've been used to ascertain their potential benefits, savings, overall cost, value for money. And because transport is vital to our economy, it enables goods and people to move round quickly and safely. As councillor Lewis mentioned in his speech, the cuts Leeds has faced over the years, especially under the Tory-Lib Dem coalition and then the Tories, have had a real impact on our services and our infrastructure, including our roads. And having a decent transport system is essential to our Leeds inclusive growth strategy too, helping boost our Leeds economy. And on Leeds economy, it's important to address our ongoing recovery from the trifecta of economic challenges, from Covid to inflation to Liz Truss. And our city's businesses have shown remarkable resilience. Footfall in the city centre is rising, the highest number since 2019 in the run-up to Christmas, and 1.3% higher than last year. Independent businesses in Kirkgate Market are not only increasing, but benefiting from a multi-million pound investment from this council, and they saw just shy of six million visitors last year, with a further investment of ten million pounds to come. These investments drive economic growth, they help create jobs. Ofsted have rated our employment and skills service outstanding, further demonstrating this council's continued investment into good jobs and our local economy. Recently, we held our local apprenticeship fair in the arena, the largest apprenticeship fair in the UK outside of London, and later this year, I'm looking forward to our Send Next Choices event, also growing every year, ensuring that good jobs are available for everyone in this city. Better infrastructure supports businesses and strengthens our local economy. A thriving local economy supports good local jobs, and good jobs will ensure that growth in Leeds benefits all in this city. I am proud to support a budget which supports these aims. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Prior. Councillor Carter?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. To continue in councillor Prior's vein, any of you recognise the figure, two-hundred-and-nineteen million, five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine pounds and thirty-three pence? Do you, councillor Prior? Well, it's your figures, your administration's figures. It's the amount that we give to third-party organisations across this council in this current year. Many of them, we would all support. People at the neighbourhood networks that you were going to cut, now it's been reinstated, we give them more. But there's also hidden in there, there's only figures councillor Dobson was talking about. When we look at city development, three million and thirty-two thousand. And I got a breakdown of all the places these areas were funded from. And most of them I'd never heard of. Some were in my ward, I've heard of them. Some were in Putsey Ward, some were in Gartham Ward. Who takes the decisions on these grants of ten and fifteen and twenty thousand pounds? I don't know any councillor around here who do. So either one of two things, the officers are doling out money ad lib, and I don't believe that, or Labour councillors are being consulted on large grants, far larger than anything we've got in community committees, and the money's being paid out. So I think members of the public would be forgiven for thinking it's a slush fund and it Leeds looking at. Secondly, another figure for you, councillor Prior. Four million pounds in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Do you know what that was? Overtime and agency payments in the refuse department. Twenty-four, twenty-five, four million pounds roughly. Agency payments and overtime payments in the refuse department for a service that isn't working. Anyone who's been in business, and a number of you may have it on your CVs, but I'd need to double-check that. You would think, well, we're paying out overtime like this. There's something radically wrong with a service that needs all that much overtime and agency payments, and still it isn't collecting all the bins, and councillor Lam's elucidated that. Nowhere in your budget have you spelt it out. Nobody on the opposition side knows, I guess. Nobody on the back benches of the Labour Party know either. Growth with businesses, private businesses, retail businesses, night-time economy businesses facing the massive increases they face in April, not yet felt. Growth, forget it, councillor Prior. You don't know how to spell the word, let alone how to achieve it. Finally, my Lord Mayor, the police. Now, I attended the budget setting of the police a fortnight ago, where the police and crime panels are supposed to question the mayor. What a waste of time that is. She prepares from a script, like a part in Coronation Street presumably, pats out the figures she wants to pat out, the budget preparation papers we get. I have to say, Victoria, make yours look brilliant, because you can't find anywhere in those papers the figures you need to find, like where they're finding money. How much increase does the police authority want through the mayor? Five-point-six percent, double the rate of inflation. You ask her what we're going to get for this, and you get waffle, and you get a cut to PCSOs, a cut to PCSOs. Councillor Galton, don't nod, your members voted to approve it. I didn't. So then councillor Galton comes along here and says, thirty-three more? Well, let's be fair, that's pretty typical councillor Galton, isn't it? Finally, final point, bereavement services. Councillor Lewis, I'm looking at you directly. Be a chum, be a pal, be a leader to your troops. I saw the faces when that was raised by virtually every opposition member. It's a piddling amount of money for a disgraceful, a disgraceful cut. So now, as we come to the end of your administration, and I suggest very strongly we are, is the time for you to stand up, let some of these boys and girls off the hook. They don't want to vote for these cuts, or they won't get away with it.
Thank you, councillor Carter, your time is up now. Thank you very much. Councillor Blackburn, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Lord Mayor. You'll be happy to know I'm not going to keep you long, because I think we all want to go home, don't we? But, secondly, I've got to say, earlier on, when I heard councillor Lewis speaking, and then the Tory response to that, I've got to say, I think you're both in different worlds, actually. And the fact is, neither of you are in right world. It's us a lot around here that's in right world, you know, we know what's going on. And you were living in this sort of, there were no Tory cuts over fourteen years, and the fact that we've had the Labour council for fifteen years in May, and that's made cuts that sometimes they didn't need to make. So as I say, I don't recognise the planet you're coming from, and there is too much about blaming things that went before, and we've got to move forward. I once remember many years ago, when I was administration, and Keith Wakefield turned round to me and says, well, and I'm blaming Gordon Brown for not giving us enough money or something, although actually he gave us more money than you've got from Tories, like. But the fact was, he turned round to me and says, stop mourning now, it's up to you, find a way through. And I think he was right there. So I don't think we need that. But there are the things in this budget that were not acceptable. Quite clearly, one of the worst ones that you dealt with, and that went neighbourhood networks. And I've got to say, I'm grateful for you not doing what you were going to do there, although I think we could have done with the upgrade, upping the amount of money we give them. But again, that's, we've got to live in realities. And we didn't find a way to put that forward. So as I say, we've done that. And the other great one, where I've done a lot of work with bowling clubs and stuff like that, as a number of other members have, you know, it's ridiculous. I mean, what you're talking about is you're talking about pence in order at budget, what you're saving there. And actually, you're going to cost yourself more, because the fact is, whether we like it or not, the majority of the people that go bowling are my age and older. And it gives them something to do, it keeps them fit and stops them needing social care. And the more we close bowling greens down, the more we call facilities like that, the more we're going to need social care. And surely it's better to get people active than have them in a community centre or whatever, being looked after by an organisation. As I say, anyway, I'm glad you've extended it to end its season and that. But what I would say to you, you know, please, see what all the opposition parties are saying. All of us are saying, you know, let's give them life until, through this financial year, and then work something out with them. I know one of my bowling clubs is working on a scheme where they're trying to get youngsters involved, so there's a future there. And I've been in contact with National Bowling, Crown Green Bowling Association, the CEO of that, where he tells me, unlike our Parks Department does, that crown green bowling is a growing sport. Well, in Leeds parks, so we need to do something about that, and that's down to you. And as was said previously, you know, when our Parks Department ever promoted crown green bowling, because they haven't. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. But what I would ask everybody to do is to support our amendments. I'll just make a point which was mentioned to me, and it's about the care leavers thing where we're proposing, we have a look at whether we can stop care leavers paying council tax for the first few years when they come out of care. And it was pointed out to me that, by one of my colleagues, that Local Government Association were in favour of that. So it isn't some wild green amendment, this, LGA believing that. Anyway, with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Blackburn. I'll now call on councillor Downs on amendment ten to twenty-seven.
Yeah, thanks, Lord Mayor. Budgets are always hard to set, and we've read your budget, and there's things in there which we don't agree with. And I think across this side of the chamber, there's many of us that think there are one or two things that you could do better or, you know, not cut. And all of them are fully costed. That's the whole point. We can't put through budget amendments if they're not fully costed. So everything that any one of us parties have done meets the criteria, you can do it. And my suspicion is that you'll vote against all of them. However, my suspicion also is that this time next year, we will see several of them coming back, or during the year, coming back and being done, as we've seen with many of us in the past. It may take a year, two years, three years. You've got the opportunity to actually do it now and save some time and make some people happy. Because with the budget proposals that you've made, and the way that you've done some of these potential cuts, like the consultation about neighbourhood networks, and the consultation about bowling greens, consultation about Queensway School, they're all sort of front-loaded, and it feels like the decision's already been made. And you come across as being, it makes you very unpopular with your electorate in our communities, which is fine by me, but it doesn't actually work, because we want our communities to benefit and to succeed. Thinking about a consultation recently about parking on the Chevin, on Golden Acre Park and one or two other parks. Eighty-five percent of people opposed it, yet it's gone through. How on earth is that consultation if you don't listen to the electorate? And just to give you an example, I was on the Chevin yesterday. I go out running in Danefield, and yesterday, Monday and Friday, I had the opportunity to do so. It felt like a ghost town. I saw, on one occasion I saw two people, on another occasion I saw three, and on the other, just the one. And it really struck me as, what's happened? Is it lockdown again? And when I got to the car parks, the first car park I got to, there were two cars. There were two parks on the road outside, one car drew up, a person got out, read the sign, got back in their car, drove off. The next person came in, got their dogs out and went for a walk without paying. Went up to the next car park, and there were five cars there. This car park is normally full, it was empty. And then I went down to the lower car park, there were two vehicles in it. One of them looks like it's an abandoned van, and I need to report that, because it was actually buried in the mud. So I don't know how much they're accruing in fees, and councillor Dobson's not here for me to sort of ask him how, you know, about the fact that Temple Newsom, we had people there for some time. So what I'm saying is, it would appear that this policy hasn't worked, because, okay, if the aim is to actually preserve the Chevin and stop people going there, it would appear at the moment to be working, because people don't want to pay to go and get some fresh air. They'll go elsewhere, but it's leaving the Chevin looking a bit deserted at the moment. I hope things change, but if not, I'd be interested to see a report in the efficacy of that policy. Sadly, and I don't approve of this and I don't agree with it, but I know that one of the metres was vandalised in Golden Acre Park and another on surprise view at the Chevin. And that sadly shows people's anger at this decision, which went against what the public of Leeds said in the consultation. And I'll go back to the fact that consultation should be consultation, and some of the policies that you're making here fail to address the consultations that have happened. And you have the opportunity now, if not in a year or two's time, to come through with some of these policies that we've provided. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Downs. Okay, I will now call on councillor Cooper on seconding the budget motion, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I just take a second to say how delighted I am to stand for the first time in the chamber, surrounded by the women's inspirational plaques on the walls. I've certainly needed some of that inspiration, listening to some of the speeches that we've had this afternoon in the chamber, excluding my colleagues, of course. had this afternoon in the chamber, excluding my colleagues, of course, some of which went back 400 years, and others seem to spend the whole time in Westminster, but hey ho! For the first time in 15 years, we have a budget that shows the first green shoots of hope. After 15 years of Tory-inflicted austerity, a fact councillor Lamb wants to ignore, we're finally in a position where we actually got more money from government than we expected. However, we still have to get over the remaining legacy of that Conservative rule, meaning that this next year's not going to be easy, its difficult and unpopular decisions still need to be taken. After that, I really do see things improving for us under a supportive government. The extra money from government has enabled us to remove proposals around Abbey House Museum and reductions to funding for neighbourhood networks, something that we consulted on and we listened on, councillor Downs, and changed policy over it. But this Labour government has gone further than the additional money this year. The comprehensive spending review is coming up, and we are anticipating that it will include details on multi-year settlements for local authorities. And we've called for that for years. It's absolutely vital, as we need to be able to plan for the longer term than year on year relying on one-off funding. And whilst we're making significant savings, we need to remember the positive things that our administration have been doing, and councillor Lewis outlined quite a number of those, so I won't go into that detail. But let's take a look at some of the amendments that have been submitted today. The Conservatives are once again promising additional PCSOs, but as usual, are struggling to fund them, this year through AI and outsourcing, very generic terms that offer absolutely no clarity over how and where these savings would be made. Can I ask councillor Lamb what services exactly his group would be planning to outsource, and how he expects to make greater use of technology without any capital spend? Even the robustness report, as councillor Stables pointed out, prepared by finance officers, shows that this supposed saving cannot be relied upon to incur spending until detail can be confirmed of where it's coming from. Councillor Lamb has simply plucked this figure out of thin air. Colleagues in executive board and scrutiny board consistently hear from Conservative members how we shouldn't rely on AI, or chatbots, or digital innovation. It's laughable to see over £8 million in savings in exactly that form. We do in fact make use of AI, I want to inform council, where it is appropriate, but let's not forget that there are numerous safeguards that need to be put in place when we're using We are trialling it and already use it within various departments in the council, children and families, say for instance, and in adults, and we're expecting to see some savings come forward from this. And many of our staff are trialling co-pilot, and we expect to see savings come forward from that. Members opposite maybe should have read the papers that have gone to executive board over a number of months, that have gone into detail about our car business transformational work, where we are increasing investment in our technology. And I'd just like to say that in terms of the new police officers that we're seeing come forward in the city, is on demand, we are going to see them deployed on demand, and not on political gains by saying where you want them deploying. I just want to also say that if you're going to fund things on feasibility studies that smoke and mirrors, they should be fully funded for the project to be carried out, and not just on feasibility studies. Five and £10,000 here and there is not going to cover the cost of what you're expecting, it's absolute leaflet fodder. I support the leaders' budget.
Thank you councillor Cooper. I will now call on councillor Flynn on the amendments for 52, sorry, for 1 to 9, amendments 1 to 9, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Bridgerton financial plan next year relies on directorates achieving significant savings, which have met with limited success so far, despite the sterling efforts of Victoria Richard and their team. Looking at the various budget saving plans across directorates, I suspect that the message isn't getting through to everyone, and as councillor Lamb has already indicated, cultural issues in some areas are blocking attempts to do things differently and better. Not just our law, not just our view, Lord Mayor, and it's unacceptable. At a recent scrutiny board, we were presented with figures showing council catering services have lost almost £10 million over the last three years, and it's still increasing despite the service review for the last 15 months. How can that possibly be? I welcome councillor Lewis's comments on innovations in children's care, an area I have a particular interest in, although I have to say, it's not before time. Children's directorate has overspent by £76 million over the last three years, equal to three-quarters of next year's financial gap alone, and that doesn't include £15 million shortfall in the DSG. They are forecasting savings of £38 million next year, so good luck with that, a triumph of hope over experience if I ever saw it. A fresh approach is badly needed. I'm also pleased that councillor Lewis and councillor Prior recognised the importance of growth to the city. One of Labour's election commitments was to deliver economic stability by growing the economy and keeping taxes and mortgages as low as possible. In other words, promoting growth. Labour say it's their number one mission, and they're aiming to be the highest sustained growth in the G7, an excellent ambition. So how's it going so far? Labour inherited a growing economy, bettered only by Canada. After Labour took over in July, the economy flatlined in quarter three, and crept over the line with an increase of 0.1% in quarter four. Only Germany, currently an economic basket case, performed worse than the G7, not an auspicious start. And don't take my word for it, this is the Bank of England's economic projections for the next couple of years. It's halved its economic growth forecast for this year to less than 1%. It's forecast inflation to almost double by the autumn, twice the Treasury inflation target. Increased its estimate for a rise in unemployment. Forecasted businesses will invest less over the next three years, and are freezing recruitment. Quite the opposite of generating growth. It'll all be interesting to see the OBR's economic forecast due next month. Councillor Lewis commented on broken Conservative promises and what Labour have been achieving, and I do wonder if he's had a case of selective amnesia. With Labour already failing its commitment to growth, it joins Labour's own list of broken promises, bad faith, and omissions from their election manifesto. Hundred yards from here, two new hospitals and a new maternity unit for Leeds, cancelled. Millions of pensioner winter fuel payments, cancelled. Waspy women misled over compensation. Inheritance tax increased and farmers abandoned. Energy bills reduced by £300 by my friend Ed. We're going up again in April by six and a half percent. No increased taxes on working people, but Angela Rayner has imposed council tax increases of up to 10% on millions of residents in six council areas, and refusing them a referendum. And national insurance increases that the OBR say will fall on 76% of workers, with the cost passed on in local wages. All political choices, Lord Mayor. The very last thing any government should do is to talk down the economy, because it's bound to affect the confidence of financial markets, but that's exactly what Labour did. The cost, together with the fallout of the budget, this month it's cost us twice as much as Germany to borrow money on the financial markets. Government borrowing is at its highest level since 2008, and more expensive than during the trust government. So much for fixing the UK foundations. The public sector does not generate growth, it's funded by it, including the council. Growth is produced by the private sector, and government's job is to create the correct environment by deregulation, infrastructure investment, and sensible tax regime. Most important of all, encouraging business investment. So what did Labour do? Labour the biggest tax rises in 30 years, with businesses bearing the brunt. Hammered the retail, hospitality, and leisure sector by reducing business rate relief to 40%, and doubling many rates bills. Councillor Prior, please note. Same old Labour, don't do as I do, do as I say, I commend the Conservative amendments, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Flynn. I will now call on councillor Chesterfield on amendments 50 to 56, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, good afternoon, colleagues, members of council, and those joining us today in the public gallery and online. Today we've sat to debate this administration's proposed budget, and as a proper democratic council, to assess and consider an essential aspect of our fiscal responsibilities, the process of budget amendments. As we continue to evaluate and adjust our financial plans, it is crucial that we keep in mind the impact of these amendments on our community, our economy, and our future. You've heard, and more importantly, listened to the amendments proposed by my own political group, the Social Democratic Party, but also those from the other political groups that represent wards across our fine city. Amendments that would reverse the parking charges in parks that have been applied to our city. Protect the future of the bowling greens. Increase numbers of enforcement officers. And facilitate the growth of community, housing, and environmental issues across the city. And reinstate community events such as a Christmas light switch on, and most controversially, bonfires.
Born by a regulation.
Securing the future of community use of buildings across the city is another important amendment. As a political group, we'll be voting with our conscience in support of many of these amendments, and I would ask you all to do the same. It's important that we balance competing priorities when making budget amendments, but we must consider the immediate needs of our community while ensuring that we don't sacrifice long-term stability. We must be prudent stewards of the public resources, making sure every pound counts towards building a stronger and more resilient city. In essence, supporting the city's families, communities, and place within this fine nation. I'll commend our amendments from earlier, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Chesterfield. I will now call on councillor Lewis to sum up, please.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. There's a couple of issues I would like to address directly from the comments made by the opposition. And I don't think I've quite been in as many budget meetings as councillor Finnegan has, I was trying to work it out earlier, but I think this is one where the least number of issues has been brought up the most time, and I think that reflects both the position we're in as a council, having to endure 14 years of continually reduced funding, that the options for all the groups are not there. We'd all like to see more money into public service, but I just wanted to directly address the issue around child bereavement services, which has been raised by multiple groups. And let me be absolutely clear to everybody in this council chamber, we have not made a decision to end all child bereavement services in this city. Many of us in the council chamber from all parties will have had bereavement of little ones in our own families, or many of us would have worked with residents in our ward who have experienced that. And let's be clear, that there is a contract that is coming to an end, but Child Bereavement UK will still be operating in Leeds. We've worked to invest money in training our own staff and practitioners across health and social care on supporting families and children. Mindmate, which is commissioned by the council and the NHS, will still continue. COOF, the Children's Society, Teen Connect, Leeds Mind, and other services will offer those vital services to people in Leeds. And I hope that reassures the opposition members who have raised this very emotive subject, that there will still be plenty of support out there. Another one I want to directly refer to, I know it was in my speech earlier, is around bowling greens. And again, there was a consultation that was held, we heard the feedback that came back from the bowling clubs around the future of Crown Green Bowling, and we'll be looking at going out with a further proposal. Myself, councillor Harland, and councillor of the month councillor Miller, were lucky, did sit down with two of the bowling clubs in our ward, we've got a meeting with a third coming up. And one of the things we are absolutely clear about is looking about how the maintenance of greens works to make sure people can continue bowling, but look about how we as a council using all the services in the council, and all our relationships with other organisations can continue to promote Crown Green Bowling alongside other sports. I'm also lucky as well to have served alongside Alderman Wakefield, he was the Alderman of the week, as well from some of the other comments made. And I think, you know, we've had a lot today of going back into the past and going around Westminster. But just to turn to the overall amendments we've heard, we've seen in the most difficult financial times for the council where we do need to have strong reserves, so we can deliver the budget we need to deliver, but also deal with unexpected shocks we get in the areas that are so demand-led, and be able to deal with that without having to cut into other council services. But we've seen in total, from all the amendments, £13 million being taken out of reserves. That is reckless and irresponsible, and will put council services at risk. We've seen £19 million of bowling, and we've seen 12 feasibility studies. Again, not real initiatives, but the illusion of action. Some of the amendments that have come in, looking through them, all the things that we're working on, and will look forward to bringing forward in the year ahead within the budget we've got. The other one I wanted to touch on, and again I referred to it earlier, is the looked after children. We are proposing in our budget that we can reduce safely and compassionately, reduce the cost of the looked after children's service by £15 million, by working with families and children, by investing in our own in-house, in Leeds, children's homes, and by looking at, giving that support to the professionals and social workers in particular, who work across, who work with children and families in Leeds. And it is something where we have shown incredible amount of innovation in the service. And there's a few areas I wanted to finish on. You know, I always think, I always think particularly when the Conservatives get on the high horse about the bin service in Leeds, those of us who are around will remember the last time the Conservatives run this council, what happened to the bin service? We had six months of chaos, when the rubbish piled up on the streets, because, labour relations broke down because they wanted to directly take on the workforce. It was an absolute shambles. And when you sit here listening to them today, about how we resource and support a growing bin service, when we're seeing more people on green waste bins, more waste going into green bins, more people on brown bins coming up, it's an absolute shambles. And compare that to the absolute shambles we had under the last Conservative administration, where their approach to the service is to try and reduce the wages of frontline staff. And those of us who remember when they did try and reduce the wages of frontline staff will understand when they say things like, oh, we're not attacking frontline staff, that is not their record from when they were in administration. I think councillor Carter will remember that in particular, because his leadership came to an end a couple of months after that disastrous bin strike he oversaw, and the city haven't had the Conservatives back since then. Now I turn to sort of the main part of the Conservatives amendments, it seems to be around AI outsourcing, and staffing reductions and building closures. Again, as councillor Prior touched on, absolutely no idea about how £8 million of all that is going to come forward. And I thought it was really, really interesting that only one out of the three Conservative speakers actually spoke to those, because I think the other two knew full well that £8 million out of thin air in a year, without any impact on services, without any impact on frontline services, our ability, where right across the city we provide face-to-face services, is absolute cloud cuckoo land and the recipe for disaster for the council, and we won't be taking it forward. And finally, I just return to councillor Lamb talking about Tetleys in Leeds. And I'm old enough to remember Tetleys Brewery on Hunst Road, I remember when the Adelphi was a brewery tap, I remember when, obviously after 18, never went in there when I was younger. I remember when, you know, I remember when the brewery was there, I remember when the Shire Horses and the Drays used to take kegs of beer around the city centre. But I also remember what happened to Tetleys in the early years of this Conservative government. It was, the company was brought out, the brand was outsourced, the building was shut, jobs were lost, and economic activity was closed down. I think actually when you look at what the bulk of the Tory amendments are around that, it has sadly, a lot of the end of Tetleys come into those amendments, its closures, its job losses, its services going, its facilities leaving the city, and it's not where we want to be. And I'm quite surprised councillor Lamb raised that as an argument. So, and I've got a bit more time, but we've heard plenty of speeches this afternoon, so I'm just going to close. It's a budget on this point. This is a budget which protects public services across this city, it is financially prudent, it's not relying on reckless made-up money or pulling things out of thin air. There is lots of areas in it where we have listened to consultations, we will respond and deliver to the city, and it will give us that platform to build to the future with a Labour government that actually will invest in the city. So on that point, I do move the budget.
Thank you councillor Lewis. Right, councillor Flynn.
Move in terms of the notice, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Stevenson. Councillor Stevenson.
Second, Lord Mayor.
Okay, so we're now going to vote on the amendments and the budget motion. Can I just check that our recorded vote is working?
I think so.
Is it working Gerald? Fantastic. Okay, just to also let you all know, we're, councillor Ali, we're sorry to see you in your crutches, and just to let everyone know that because his, he can't, because of his pain, he can't sit where he would normally sit, so he would swap with councillor Carlisle, no? Yes, that's right, yeah, so he will swap with councillor Carlisle so that he can use councillor's console to vote. Is that correct? And we wish you a speedy recovery.
Thanks, Father. Thank you.
I will now hand over to our chief exec for the sprint.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Shall we begin? Would all members excepting councillors Mohan Ali and Carlisle please ensure that they're in allocated seats? Members have requested a recorded vote on amendment one in the name of councillor Lam. Members should refer to their desk unit and press the green button marked yes plus to vote in favour, press the red button marked no minus to vote against, press the yellow button marked abstain zero to abstain, and I won't read this out every time.
You done it now?
Councillor Leah as well.
Councillor Leah.
Lay.
Oh Lay, councillor Lay.
I didn't know which started.
Are you joking? Councillor Lay, it's not playtime yet. Please vote.
That's fine, Lord Mayor.
Okay. So we have 94 in total, yes 32, abstain, we've got six, no 56. So that's been lost. Sorry. Next.
Okay, amendment two, also in the name of councillor Lam. Over to you.
We've got 60 to go, you know guys, so please. Okay, 94 voted, yes 32, abstain 3, no 59. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment three, also in the name of councillor Lam.
94 voted, yes 34, abstain 4, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment four, in the name of councillor Lam.
The fastest voter gets a prize. Voted 94, yes 32, abstain 6, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment five, in the name of councillor Lam.
Oh God. 94 voted, yes 32, abstain 6, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment six, in the name of councillor Lam.
Yes 32, abstain 6, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment seven, in the name of councillor Lam.
You all are doing very well. Well done. Two more. One more. That's it. Yes 23, abstain 2, no 69. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment eight, in the name of councillor Lam.
Three more. That's it. Two more. One more. Who is it? That's it. Well done. Yes 35, abstain 3, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment nine, in the name of councillor Lam.
94 voted, yes 30, abstain 8, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
We now move to amendment 10, in the name of councillor Galton.
Well done members, almost there. Three more. Three more. That's it. One more. That's it. Yes 31, abstain 6, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 11, in the name of councillor Galton.
That's it. No. One more. Who is it? Councillor Campbell. Oh dear. Okay, that's it now. Yes 24, abstain 12, no 58. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 12, in the name of councillor Galton.
Yes 15, abstain 22, no 57. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 13, in the name of councillor Galton.
You guys are great. Yes 15, abstain 8, no 71. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 14, in the name of councillor Galton.
Thank you members. Yes 30, abstain 5, no 59. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 15, in the name of councillor Galton.
That's it. Thank you. Yes 37, abstain 1, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 16, in the name of councillor Galton.
Who is it please? That's it now. Yes 33, abstain 5, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 17, in the name of councillor Galton.
Who is it please? That's it. Yes 28, abstain 10, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 18, in the name of councillor Galton.
That's it. Yes 29, abstain 6, no 59. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 19, in the name of councillor Galton.
Who's it? Who is it? That's it. Excellent. Yes 15, abstain 6, no 73. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 20, in the name of councillor Galton.
Yep, agree. That's it. Yes 18, abstain 17, no 59. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 21, in the name councillor Galton.
Yes 21, abstain 17, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 22, in the name of councillor Galton.
Come on members, that's it. One more. That's it. Yes 11, abstain 27, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 23, in the name of councillor Galton.
Yes 36, abstain 2, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 24, in the name of councillor Galton.
Yes 38, abstain 0, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 25, in the name councillor Galton.
Who are they? One more. That's it. Yes 36, abstain 2, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 26, in the name of councillor Galton.
Two more. One more. One more. Who is it? Councillor Gettings. That's all right. Yes 36, abstain 2, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 27, in the name of councillor Galton.
That's it. Thank you. Yes 15, abstain 6. Sorry, yes 14, abstain 7, no 73. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 28, in the name of councillor Stables.
Keep going members, we're almost there. Well done. All right. Yes 9, abstain 12, no 73. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment number 29, in the name of councillor Stables.
One more. Who is it? That's it. Yes number 10, abstain 3, no 81. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 30, in the name of councillor Stables.
Keep going members, almost there now. One more. Who is it please? Who is it? 92, 93, one purse. Who is it? Councillor Cunningham. Yes 9, abstain 27, no 58. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment number 31, in the name of councillor Stables.
Yes 7, abstain 26, no 61. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 32, in the name of councillor Stables.
Keep going, we're almost there. Two more. That's it. Yes 6, abstain 12, no 76. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 33, in the name of councillor Stables.
Who is it please? That's it. Yes 32, abstain 3, no 59. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 34, in the name councillor Stables.
Yes 6, abstain 6, no 82. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 35, in the name of councillor Stables.
Who is it please? That's it. They know themselves. Yes 24, abstain 12, no 58. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 36, in the name councillor Stables.
Yes 30, abstain 5, no 59. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 37, in the name of councillor Dobson.
One more. One more. Who is it please? That's it. Yes 23, abstain 9, no 62. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 38, in the name of councillor Dobson.
That's it. Yes 24, abstain 13, no 57. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 39, in the name of councillor Dobson.
Come on. That's it. Two, yep, that's it. One more. Excellent. Yes 35, abstain 3, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 40, in the name of councillor Dobson.
Yes 36, abstain 1, no 57. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 41, in the name of councillor Dobson.
We're almost there now. Come on. Two more please. That's it. Yes 37, abstain 1, no 56. That has been lost. Next please.
Amendment 42, in the name of councillor Dobson.
One more. That's it. Yes 33, abstain 5, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 43, in the name councillor Dobson.
Yes 28, abstain 10, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 44, in the name of councillor Smith.
That's it. Thank you. Yes 28, abstain, someone's just changed it. Yes 29, abstain 9, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 45, in the name of councillor Smith.
Yes 38, abstain 0, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 46, in the name of councillor Smith.
Who is it? Councillor Venna?
Amendment 47, in the name of councillor Smith.
Yes 31, abstain 7, no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 48, in the name of councillor Smith.
That's it. One more. That's it. Yes 37 abstain, one no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 49, in the name of councillor Smith.
Two more. One more. That's it. Yes 36 abstain, one. You've changed it now. Yes 36 abstain, one no 57. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 50, in the name of councillor Dixon.
One more. That's it. Yes 35 abstain, two no. You've changed it. Yes 35 abstain, three no 56. That's been lost.
Amendment 51, in the name of councillor Dixon.
One more. That's it. Thank you. Yes 24 abstain, four no 66. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 52, in the name of councillor Dixon.
One more. One more. Who is it please? That's it. Thank you. Yes 26 abstain, four no 64 and that's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 53, in the name of councillor Dixon.
Okay. Yes 38 abstain, zero no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 54, in the name of councillor Dixon.
Yes 22 abstain, 16 no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 55, in the name of councillor Dixon.
One more. Who is it please? That's it. Yes 37 abstain, one no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 56, in the name of councillor Dixon.
One more. That's it. Yes 14 abstain, 15 no 65. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 57, in the name of councillor Newton.
Three more. Two more. Two more. Who are they? One more. That's it. Well done. Okay. Yes 8 abstain, 16 no. You've changed it. Yes 8 abstain, 17 no 69. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 58, in the name of councillor Newton.
Two more. One more. One more. Councillor Wilson. Where are you? All right. Okay. Yes 18 abstain, 12 no 64. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 59, in the name of councillor Newton.
One more. That's it. Yes 25 abstain, 12 no 57. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 60, in the name of councillor Newton.
We're almost there now. Look at you all smiling. That's it. Yes 25 abstain, 12 no 57. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 61, in the name of councillor Newton.
One more. Who is it? Councillor Finnegan. Yes 37 abstain, one no 56. That's been lost. Next please.
Amendment 62, in the name of councillor Newton.
Three more. One more. One more. Who is it? Councillor Cohen. Really? You just want me to call your name? Have you voted? Or just now? All right. Yes 7 abstain, 29 no 58. That's been lost.
Okay. And finally, the budget motion in the name of councillor Lewis.
Two more. Who are they? Councillor Field and councillor McCormack. Can you please vote? Okay, excellent. Right, so yes 57 abstain, 37 no zero. That's been carried. Well done members. Okay. Agenda. We're not finished. Agenda item number five, recommendations of general purposes committee pay policy statement. Councillor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to double up here for efficiency and move in terms of the notice and ask for a recorded vote.
Councillor Flint?
Second that, Lord Mayor. Okay. Recorded vote.
Okay. Would all members please ensure they're in their allocated seats, excepting councillor Mohan Ali and councillor Carlisle? Yeah. Carry on. Members, we requested a recorded vote on the motion put forward by councillor Lewis. Members should refer to their desk unit, press green for yes plus to vote in favour, press red marked no minus to vote against, and press the yellow button marked stain zero to abstain.
Three more. Two more. Excellent. Yes 65 abstain, 27 no two. That's been carried. Okay. Agenda item number six, executive board meeting. Minut- sorry. Councillor Lewis.
Moving in terms of the notice, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Flint?
Second, Lord Mayor.
Okay. I will now call for the vote to receive the minutes, please. Those four? Those against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Thank you very much. So just before we go, just to remind you all, tomorrow is the Lord Mayor's Just One Day. And just to let you know, we are going to have the rapid relief team who would be providing hot food for all, about 180 staff. And their ethos is all about compassion in action. And the theme for this year's Just One Day is actually play, where the council are trying to promote play in schools as well as adults. So we are going to be playing tomorrow. We're going to have a musical chairs competition. Councilors as well as officers. In 2020, we had that competition and councillor Prior actually holds that position as first in 2020. Baroness Blake won for the women, if you remember councillor Prior in 2020. Yeah. So just to let you know, there will be that competition tomorrow. Whoever wins from councillor's side and whoever wins from the officer's side, there will be a competition between both of them. There will be other games as well for those of you who would not want to do any musical chairs. But just make sure whatever happens, we are playing. And just to wish all our Muslim members a very, very happy Ramadan. Ramadan starts in a couple of days. Lent also starts on the 5th of March. So wishing you all a lovely time during Ramadan as well as Lent. And I was also advised that it's councillor Ray's birthday tomorrow. So someone in the Labour office did not tell us. But councillor Ray, happy birthday. Yeah. And that brings us to the end of today's meeting. Thank you all so much. Thank you.